Okay, a college meeting to order at 6:37 PM. And to begin by saying, in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, this meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted with some remote participation, while in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and a quorum of the school committee will be in person. This meeting is concurrently being presented through a Google Meet and/or by a live broadcast by NORCAM to allow the public and any school committee members who cannot attend to participate. Welcome, everyone. So, before beginning, the first thing on our agenda is always public comment, and I just want to make a couple of quick comments on the public comment, and Dr. Daley already talked to people in the room here. We have about 106 people on the Google Meet as well, so we're going to be able to hear from whoever wants to speak, both in the room and on Google Meet, but if you can try to keep conversations down within the room, that will help because we're all broadcasting through this one microphone. For public comments, just very quickly, most public committees, they say that you have to have your public comment in the beginning, they give you three minutes to speak, and then that's it. We think it makes more sense for you to hear the presentation first and then be able to comment, so in the beginning, we'll do a public comment. If you have anything that you would like to speak about that is not on the agenda tonight, you can raise that in that public comment. Otherwise, what we're going to do is, we're going to have a presentation on each thing that is on the agenda. The school committee members will then make comments and ask questions, and then we will open it up to public comments to anybody else that wants to add comments at that point in time. So in the very beginning, the public comment is really just for anything that's not on the agenda. A couple of quick, you know, guidelines and rules for tonight. Number one, please presume positive intent, okay? Everybody here is a parent. We are volunteers on the school committee. Every one of us has children that are either in the schools or have graduated recently. We are trying to make the best decision we can. The goal of this in the public comment is to hear your thoughts. We want to hear where you're coming from. You know, we can only see things from where we sit. You know, I'm a parent of three kids. I know what my perspective is. Your perspective might be different. So, in the public comment, give us your thoughts. Let us know. That's what will help us. Please be respectful, you know, to other people in this room. Be respectful to, you know, everybody while you're making your comments. In the, for the people on the Google Meet, please do not start chatting in the chat box. There's 106 people. We don't need private conversations going on. We need to know if somebody has a specific comment and they are not able to speak. We need to know if the audio goes out. We need to know if somebody is raising their hand, so we really need people in the chat box, not to have private conversations. And in terms, there's a lot of people here tonight, so we're going to try to hear from everybody, but we are going to ask people to limit yourselves to about two to three minutes when you make the comments, and we're going to try to hear from everybody before we start calling on people a second time. So you're only going to be guaranteed one time to speak. We do have a number of things on the agenda tonight. As much as we may want to be here until 10 or 11, we would like to try to get this over within, you know, an hour, hour and a half for at least the first six. Okay. Those are the guidelines. So first, public comment. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up to the committee that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we don't have a student report tonight, so we're going to go right to the new business, and the first thing on the agenda is the reopening for the fall of 2021. So Dr. Daley is going to present on this, and I turn it over to Dr. Daley.
Great. Thank you very much. So, so now I'm going to be presenting both virtually and in person. I don't know whether anyone there can just verify for me if they're hearing, they're able to hear me from the speakerphone. God, is someone...
Can somebody, if somebody that's on...
Just give a thumbs up.
We can hear you.
You can hear it. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Very good. All right. So, just want to walk us through some of our thoughts for reopening for the fall. So, just as a little bit of a background, July 26, 2021, we had a school committee discussion in front of any guidance coming out. We talked about our position to the district, what I heard. At that time, we anticipated there may be something coming pretty soon, and we then had guidance come out on July 30, which was joint guidance from the Department of Public Health of Massachusetts and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. At that time, I shared out with the community sort of an update that, you know, we reviewed the guidance, and at this time, we were following that guidance, moving forward for the fall of 2021. We had a Board of Health meeting, which I was asked to attend. I meet regularly with the Director of Public Health, the Public Health Nurse, the Town Administrator, the Chief Fire Chief. We meet regularly. We start, resumed, meeting again weekly a few weeks going back. I was invited to the Board of Health meeting where I present some of our thoughts. Just to be clear, the way this works, the Board of Health does have the ability to, so my job is to make a recommendation to the school committee about thoughts and what our plan would be. The school committee then would make a vote or decision on any aspect of the reopening plan. I think a lot of us might want to talk about mask, although there's a lot more to this plan than just mask, but school committee could make that decision. Board of Health also, obviously, is in a position where the Board of Health is able to make a recommendation, I'm sorry, make a mandate based on their authority. So the Board of Health had a meeting. I made a presentation. They heard some public comment that night as well. August 13, which is last Friday, they came out with, the Department of Education came out with new protocols and scenarios, which I'll share in my update tonight. Tonight's meeting, which we're at right now, the Board of Health has suggested August 26 is their next meeting, and September 8 is our first day of school for students. So, there's still a good amount of time. There's still a lot. I know that many people want to know something and be able to operate. I'm going to try and give some thoughts and directions on that for people that just want to know, no matter what it is, they want to know now, but there is a lot of time and a lot of things can still happen to change between now and the first day of school. But this is the, you know, when I get asked a lot, and let me just communicate to the committee that I've heard quite a bit from people on both sides, people that felt that the guidance, and I kind of joke about it, I got four emails in a row. The first one said, you know, "We're not doing enough." The second one said, "We're doing too much." The third one said, "The link didn't work," and the fourth one said, "I didn't get the email." So, absolutely, 100% across the board, just passionate feelings of both sides, and I agree with what Mr. Buckley said. We need to presume positive intent. Everyone here tonight and everyone that's shared is trying to argue what they think is best for their children and for all children, and that's why we're here. But under the guidance, I've been asked, what preventative measures are we taking? And if we follow the Department of Education's guidance, which is what I was recommending, and this is what that would include. So masking involves students in kindergarten through grade six, when indoors, those students are not eligible to be vaccinated. This is what the guidance recommends. This is strongly recommended in the guidance. Masking of all unvaccinated students and staff at all grade levels, which is also strongly recommended. Providing as much distance as feasible. There's no set recommendations for six feet, three foot. It's providing as much distance as possible, but I will share in some of the contact tracing protocols that we'll talk about, the QR mask, and in a three-foot distance, you'll see that there is a relief for being identified in close contact. Three types of COVID-19 testing, so we will have that, and I will break that down and explain in a little more detail what those types are that are available as preventative measures. Obviously, the hand washing, the hygiene, the things you practiced all along, and vaccination clinics, which again are optional, but we have offered some on-site just out of convenience for that familiar location and that familiar face. We've had some of our school nurses and our public health nurse, as well as we've cooperated with a pharmacy to work on that. So those are things that we've done preventative, and we would continue to do throughout the year. So, a lot of questions that, you know, things that I forget are even on the table. I got an email the other day about half-day, so I figured I'd just put everything in. What will school look like? It will be in-person. It will be five days a week. Those are sort of the non-negotiables from the state that are out there. There is not a remote or hybrid this year. Students will be able to share materials, so in classes like art, PE, recess, being on the playground, you know, being able to share manipulators or share paintbrush, to throw a ball back and forth in PE class, those things are okay, and a lot of that has to do with the research, the science, saying that there's not as much of a concern with the virus living on surfaces. It's mostly about the transmission. So those things at this time are not a part of the plan. Again, whatever I say at this time, it's because there could be state guidance or restrictions that come out that we then have to adjust. Right now, I'm operating under what's been shared with us. All of those restrictions were lifted at the end of the school year and have not been reinstated. Students will rotate classes. So last year at the middle school, the students stayed in one place, the teachers moved. That is not a part of our plan for the fall, the same with the elementary schools. We still will try to limit mobility and rotation whenever possible, but we are not looking to repeat that again. The students, especially at the high school, who were rotating classes, were cleaning after every single person moved. Again, there still will be plenty of materials available for cleaning, and people that are very concerned are going to have access to cleaning supplies as they would in a normal year, but we, I think we have a fair amount of leftover, I'll put it that way. But the procedure of this cleaning, even by late spring, that was kind of said, that was a bit of a, you know, we say a balance of caution, it was a bit of an overkill is what came out. So we did that, we're happy that we did that last year, not a part of what we're doing for this plan. No half-day Wednesdays, remote learning or hybrid learning at this time. That is not a part of the plans for this year. Activities such as music, chorus, band, extracurriculars, and athletics should resume indoors and outdoors. To date, there are no additional restrictions that I'm aware of. MIAA just came out the other day saying there's not restrictions with athletics, with masks, or with any regulation or gameplay or changes. There were a lot of rule regulation changes last year. Not aware of any of those items at this time. What will school look like in the future? Access to routine COVID testing and vaccination clinics. Positive individuals will need to isolate. Close contacts or positive individuals will follow new quarantine response protocols. Many students and staff will be wearing masks following that strong recommendation. So, in my feeling, I mean, I'm seeing a lot more masks in public, right? We're seeing it the more we go out. I went to a Lowe's in New Hampshire over the weekend, and every employee was wearing a mask. That's not something I even remember from before. So I think there's going to be a lot of people wearing masks with that strong recommendation, without a mandate. I think we're going to still be a lot of people wearing masks, choosing to wear masks. All visitors will be required to wear masks, and visitations will be limited. And I'll explain that in detail. The reason we're doing that is we're not getting into the business of checking vaccination cards. So while it's up to people to decide whether they're going to do this, right now at this time, we are, we're going to continue to limit and be creative with visitations and try to limit visitors coming into the building and trying to have masks. We don't want our principals and assistant principals spending all their time trying to figure out whether someone's allowed to be here without a mask or with a mask, if they're vaccinated, unvaccinated. So that one is something that we're, you know, the principals were very adamant about, and our teachers also want to be clear with that, and I think that's a fair assessment for letting people into the building, but that's certainly something that we're going to continue to look at. Masks are required on buses and in the nurse's office, that's a federal mandate, that's not something we have jurisdiction over. So the culture of the buildings, I've said this a few times, the masks are still going to be in the kids' pockets, even if they're not wearing a mask under this recommendation. You'd have a mask in your pocket, in your backpack, you'd need it for a bus, or if you go to the nurse, or perhaps another scenario. So masks would still be something that would be available for students if they're in a situation where they need them. Students will be distanced, when indoors and unmasked for lunch as much as possible. Lunch will be unmasked and requires systems to track seating arrangements for contact tracing. So just to clarify something I said at the Board of Health, I said that we need assigned seats at lunch. We don't necessarily need assigned seats at lunch. What we need is a way to be able to track where students are in case someone is positive, and we need to do contact tracing because that's a scenario where students would be unmasked and within a certain distance. And so we've already kind of taken some steps, and I got some nice thoughts from students about ways to do this using technology. I think we certainly will have some ways to do that. So we had, we heard a lot of good arguments at the Board of Health meeting about why we want to not be assigning seats at lunch and the social-emotional impact. Totally get that, we're well aware of it, and that's something that we're going to be addressing in different ways. So, I don't think we're going to be really assigning seats, especially to secondary level. We're going to have some technology in place for that, but I did want to share that. The recommendation would be for a daily health screening for unvaccinated individuals, so for folks to really keep track of the symptomatic, you know, if anyone has symptoms, to have that daily reassurance, to make sure that the unvaccinated folks are completing that. That's really something that our teachers' union strongly feels should be a part of our plan. So, I'm just going to take a moment.
Dr. Daley, just to clarify, this is not on the Zoom, correct? The presentation? That's not being broadcast on the Zoom?
I think, yeah. So just let me take a minute. That should be on... So the protocols for responding to the scenario, this is just sort of a breakdown, this is really what came out on Friday, lots of information to consider. So, three types of testing. We were fortunate that we started to explore this last year, and we've done the symptomatic testing and the routine COVID safety checks, what we would refer to as pool testing, they've changed the name slightly, I'm still going to refer to it that way back and forth. We've had both of those in place. We've had a year, a half a year, we'll say, experience with some of those procedures. There's going to be a slightly different provider and a different process, but we've been fortunate to explore that, or ready to do that, and also introduce the test and stay process as well. These are the COVID-19 symptoms that they're identifying in the guidance. The ones that are in bold are a little bit different, and those affect, the ones that are more prominent if you are already vaccinated. So those that are in bold are the ones our nurses will address for people, for vaccinated people to be addressing as possible COVID symptoms. So a bit of a differentiation this year for a vaccinated person and unvaccinated person with some of these symptoms. So the basic definition of close contact has not changed. It's defined as individuals who have been within six feet of a COVID-19 positive individual while indoors for at least 15 minutes during a 24-hour period, and we always have to go back 48 hours from symptom onset or the time of a positive test. So this is the process that our nurses and our public health nurse will be using for contact tracing. But all of the changes I'm about to share with you are driven by the main goal, so obviously, our number one goal is to keep kids safe. The number two goal, or the number 1A goal, is to keep kids in school as much as possible. So I think you'll see some of these adjustments will keep kids in school a lot more. So the following groups would be exempt from testing and quarantine response. So asymptomatic, fully vaccinated students. So if you're within that close range, but you're asymptomatic and you're fully vaccinated, you would not be a close contact. If you're in a classroom, if you're in a classroom, close contact, and you're exposed to COVID-19 positive individual in the classroom, well, both individuals are masked, so a lot of individuals are spaced at least three feet apart, you'd be exempt from the testing and quarantine protocol. That might be an additional incentive for someone who's vaccinated to wear a mask. You wouldn't have to then be a part of this next protocol around the strap and the... For all people on the bus, because all individuals on the bus are required to wear masks as long as they're on the buses with the windows open, which is the procedures we'll be following, they would be exempt, so that would eliminate the need to trace on a bus. And close contact, who've had COVID-19 within the past 90 days, would also be exempt from the protocols that I'm about to share. The Protocol A is for someone who is positive. If you test positive, you're still going to isolate for 10 days after symptom onset, or a positive PCR antigen test if you're asymptomatic. Your return to school would be based on the time, and it would be a count that you work on with the nurses, and obviously, you have to have those symptoms be resolved. So it's not just a number of days, but it's obviously, you have to be symptom-free for a certain amount of time as well. And those students that are positive with COVID would be absent from school. There's not going to be remote instructions. Doesn't mean they're completely cut off. They would have all the same access to websites and emails and all those things that you would typically have when you're out with strep throat or chicken pox or whatever that you name the school for, but there's not a remote option for anyone this year, even those that are out with COVID, and that's across the state per the Department of Defense. This is a big change. This is the test and stay protocol, which goes along with the test and stay testing options. For those that opt to use the testing, if you are close contact, so you don't meet any of those four waivers from the previous slide, the test and stay for seven days after the day of exposure, you would take daily tests. So we probably have some kind of process where if you're in close contact, you come to school before school, you've done this out, you stay in your car, you come outside, you be tested. As long as you're negative, you'd be able to come into school. Those students would be required to wear masks during that seven days. They would take rapid antigen tests daily, monitor their symptoms, but if they follow that protocol, they'd be able to participate in all sports and activities as well as school. So that's sort of one route. If someone doesn't want to participate in the testing piece, it would be a seven-day quarantine at home, returning on day eight. They would have to remain asymptomatic during that time, receive negative COVID results, monitored for 14 days, and again, there's a 10-day quarantine if you choose not to get a test at all. So there's some different avenues for people who are asymptomatic, close contact. Again, these are for the people that don't meet those other requirements that were set up before. Protocol C, this is for if you're symptomatic. So this is where we would have in place the symptomatic testing, which we have, Binax Now testing. If you have those symptoms that are identified, if you get the negative PCR test or an alternative medical diagnosis, like if you go to a doctor, the doctor says, "This isn't COVID, this is definitely influenza or strep," you would be able to return. You'd need improved symptoms and a reduced fever without medicine. If you're symptomatic individuals who are not close contacts and choose not to test, there would be a 10-day isolation. So there's still going to be, if you're symptomatic, there's going to be a process for determining being... This was all laid out, this came out on Friday, and we're still kind of unpacking that. So again, our three options. If someone has symptoms, they're able to go to the nurse and see whether they can remain in school, whether they're positive. It's a 15-minute test, nasal swab. The test and stay is a new piece, that's the protocol to allow more cases to stay in school, less contact tracing. I mean, there were times last year where we had, you know, one or two individuals, because of students traveling around, you're now putting out 15, 20 people on a quarantine out of a balance of caution. We had almost no transmission at all between some of those positives and the students, I would say in situations where students were fully masked and maintained a distance of three feet, we did not see that transmission at all. So these, all of these protocols are going to allow kids to stay in school, but also provide those assurances that we're not continuing to spread positive COVID-19. And then obviously, the routine safety checks for COVID, pool testing, we will continue that process, which is an opt-in program. It is recommended for folks, and I'll go over that in a moment. So, the symptomatic testing, if you have mild symptoms, we use the Binax Now antigen test. If you're positive, you would follow that first protocol. If symptoms present, the individual may be retested within three days. If it worsens, then the individual should seek medical care and evaluate the need for a PCR test. The test and stay is for those asymptomatic, close contacts, and it allows you to remain in school. And then the pool testing, a couple of changes here. It was, it would be strongly recommended for unvaccinated district and school staff. It's not really recommended for vaccinated students and staff, but it would be allowable. So if someone is vaccinated and they're very nervous about it and want to be a part of the pool testing, they could participate, and it's also not recommended for any individual who's tested positive for COVID-19 in the past 90 days. So those tests, pool testing would be done weekly. A little bit of a change here, we had a lot of success with student self-administering. We did that in grade two and above. This year, they're saying that can be done K and above, but that's done under the supervision of a trained staff member. So, I haven't even vetted this with our nurses yet, but right now, this is what the guidance is recommending, that it could be done K and above. We had a lot of success with our students being able to do this. If the pool's negative, everyone remains in school. If a pool's positive, the individuals now within the pool are retested. If everyone comes back negative, everyone stays in school. If someone tests positive, then we go on from there to figure out if that person's positive and trace from there. So we did have to do this. Out of all the pool testing we did last year, I think we only had to do the follow-up testing one time. The good news is, all of this testing, all three aspects are covered by the Department of Education this year. There's a new provider, CIC, so there's going to be a new process, some new consent forms. For those that worked with Project Pecan last year, it'll be slightly different, and it'll be a combination of our local school nurses, and there's also going to be some staff and support provided by CIC to help us implement this. Because you can imagine, it could be a very big operation. Our nurses have a full-time job that they're doing anyway, so that's great that we're going to have that support as well. And so just a few last pieces here, a lot of questions about vaccination.
Dr. Daley?
Yes.
Really quick, just two questions on this while you're going through it.
Yes.
You say covered by DEFC. Financially, they're paying for all of it for the whole year?
Yeah.
And then, in terms of enrolling, if somebody was enrolled last year in testing, did they have to re-enroll again, and will you be sending out the forms to re-enroll soon?
Yes, so everyone will have to re-enroll. It's a totally new company, a totally new process. The state has contracted with one provider, and we're all going to do it the same way. And I'm still, we have a webinar tomorrow and another one, you know, there's more information about what that process will look like. I'm hoping that it's an electronic process similar to last year. I get questions about the vaccination numbers. This is as of age 12. So in the range of 12 to 15%, 55% are fully vaccinated, 65% of students have at least one dose in that age group, 71% in the 16 to 19 range, 78% with at least one dose. We haven't officially collected the data on our staff, but we've unofficially collected it for quite some time, and it's around 88%. That's where it was last spring, so this doesn't account for new hires, people that have left, but that's where our vote, our number was the last time that we took that number. So some folks have asked that question. When you look at the data across sort of the Middlesex League, where those numbers are good, but we're somewhere in the middle of the pack. You know, we're definitely not the top, you know, above 95%. There's a lot of districts in the 90s and 80s where, you know, with 70s especially, we're getting closer to that number that we're working for. The governor came out again today and said, "You very strongly feel that Massachusetts is in a different place. We've been doing the right thing. We've been getting people vaccinated." And the main message, and I think the main incentive of this program is, fully vaccinated people should be, you know, we should encourage everyone to get vaccinated. Unvaccinated should be strongly recommended to wear a mask. Those that are fully vaccinated would be able to, you know, everyone can choose to wear a mask, but fully vaccinated would not be required to wear a mask. So that's, really, the masking is one of the most major things that would be unlike a typical school. You know, so I think those are the major components of the presentation. So, you know, I've heard quite a bit from lots of people on both sides. At this time, my recommendation would still be to follow the DEFC guidance. Again, this is the Department of Education, the Department of Public Health, who know a lot more about all this and whether it's safe or not than I do, and so I feel that the Department of Public Health has said this is a safe way to proceed. I do think that, you know, our local Board of Health is going to review our local data, and when they weigh in, it may be a different recommendation. I think we also have to respect their authority and their expertise in making those decisions. That's how I feel, and I think it's important for us to make the recommendation, we feel as best for our community, to hear from our community, and then to respect the decisions that are made, and that's where I come back to that.
Thank you, Dr. Daley. I'm going to start with the school committee, but for people that are here that would like to make a comment or ask a question, if you guys want to start coming down and sort of line up on both sides, just because for people to hear would be easier that way, then I can also see who's here. If you're on the Google Meet, just raise your hand, and we'll sort of go through all of them. I want to start with the committee members and see if people have questions, comments. I always have thoughts, but I will defer to you guys if you want to go first, or I will start off if people want me to start off, so.
Buckley, anybody want to start off?
I will begin then. So, thank you, Dr. Daley, for your thoughts. Obviously, COVID's still a big issue here. This year's going to look different than years in the past, but it's going to look quite different than it did last year as well. I'm just going to start by saying there's merit on both sides of the mask argument, okay? We need to stop the spread. There are vulnerable students in our community, but at the same time, masks are not a perfect solution to it, and they also cause problems. And so, I don't think this is an all or nothing either way. I think the school committee's main objective is ensuring that schools stay open, that students can learn, and different people interpret that differently. Where I come down on this is, last year, there was a lot of unknown. We had CDC telling us things, we had DEFC telling us things, we had, you know, the Academy of Pediatric, you know, pediatricians telling us something. The school committee looked to DEFC as our guidance. We decided to look and follow their guidance, we took them as the trusted authority. I don't think that we should change who we're looking to at this point in time either. I think that we've looked at the D E F C guidance in the past, D E F C is saying right now that it's strongly recommended if you're not vaccinated, and they're saying that if you are vaccinated, there is no mandate or even, I don't even think a recommendation to wear a mask. So personally, I think that's where, what we've looked in the past 15 months, and I think we stay with what D E F C is doing. Now, with that being said, a few things. Number one, the school committee can go beyond what DESI is saying, but I think we should be cautious in using that. I think school committee members up here are not public health officials. I think that we should not be creating public health guidelines. The governor and DESI can do that on the state level. Locally, we have a Board of Health that does that. I was at the Board of Health meeting, I heard them, they very clearly said they're going to be monitoring the numbers in town, and they may come out with guidance, they may come out with a mandate, and that is ultimately their decision to make. The other thing I will point out is, whatever is decided or not decided today, this is August 16th, things are going to change throughout this year. You know, there are going to be positives that happen sometimes, there may, at some point in time, we may have to make some changes, you know? I also think that it's important, and one thing that didn't come out in the Board of Health, I don't think this is an all or nothing either. Last year, there was a lot of things that were done beyond just masks, you know? And we're talking about essentially going back to what we did before, and then there's a lot of questions about the mask. I think, for one thing, there could be a, a step where maybe there's a mask required in the hallways when you come in and out of school, but just like with restaurants, when you had to wear it in, you could sit down at the table and take your mask off. My point is, whatever happens, we're going to have to look at the numbers and keep evaluating. I think we start off with what D E F C is recommending, and that's where I come down on this, and just one, one person's thoughts, so. Other people's thoughts. Mr. McGowan, you're never shy, I'll call on you first.
Sure. I mostly have some questions. Dr. Daly, so in the, in the guidance on, on the, on the various testing scenarios, and there's a lot about if you're vaccinated, it's one thing, if you're not vaccinated, it's another thing, so is that something that the nurse would be asking, or how, because we don't know who is vaccinated or not right now, right? So just wondering how that will play out. Right? So, yeah, at any point, that's one of the tricky things that we're trying to avoid with anyone, is getting into the whole vaccination process. With that piece, when it comes down to be a close contact, that's where the nurse might need to talk to his family about that. Because that's, again, we're not going to do it to get into school or to come to school, but to avoid being a close contact, that's one, that's one way where that might come up. And if you can't get that information, would there be an assumption of not vaccinated, or? I think that would, yeah, I think there'd be other, that would sort of key in another protocol, you know? So, but again, being vaccinated, as far as avoiding being in close contact, was one of four ways, you know, to avoid that, maybe there's other ways to, to prevent that. But we're trying to avoid it, you know, in any case, trying to have people show up to school with cards to prove they're vaccinated. The honor system has worked very well, and we feel that that would continue. And again, you're talking about, you know, high 70s there, and that's, there's time, you know, for that second number to kick in, we have plenty of time for all those people to get there, that have had a first dose to have their second. And we're hoping more people will continue to get that. Regarding the buses, is anybody going to be enforcing that, the mask mandates on the buses? Is the bus company responsible for that, or on their own? Do you want to speak?
Sure. So we'll certainly have masks available on all the buses, and we will be working with the bus company and the bus drivers to, to sort of provide, provide masks for the students that don't have that. We'll certainly know if there's a waiver and make sure that the drivers are familiar with those students in advance, but we'll, we'll be asking for assistance with the bus company and the drivers for that.
I'll just say, that is the federal mandate, I definitely need to go over that. Partly feels like if that's a place people have had a choice, that people might see that that's a requirement, I think we get more, we have to, you know, address that with the family, I think that we probably get more mileage out of that conversation. The other question I had, you mentioned that you, it sounds like you would really like to have every student have a mask on, with them during the school day, regardless of whether they choose to wear one, is that right? Yeah, my, my thinking is, that's the culture, it's not that, you know, we're going to throw all the masks away. I think they're still around, and even if this guidance changes in two weeks from the state level, we might have to adjust. We don't know. There are some unknowns with Delta variant, we've all heard all of that, and we're hearing about breakthrough cases. There's two narratives in the media right now, we're trying to see which ones going to play out at the official level. And you had the CDC come out today and say Massachusetts residents, vaccinated or not, should wear masks when indoors. That came out today. The governor also came out and said, we are not doing a mask mandate, and it's all about vaccinations, period. So there's two different narratives out there, and that's playing out. I think the idea though, the culture we want to create in school, is that kids are going to have masks, and keep them in the nurse, and keep them on the bus, if, you know, if it's a field trip, if it's somewhere that requires them, the library, who knows, wherever that is. So I think that idea, that masks are still there, and I think honestly, if you're in a situation where there are children around that say, you know, I'm really uncomfortable without masks, kids might want to put them on. So I think creating that culture of, of that makes sense, but I think at the same time, this recommendation would allow for some flexibility for those who aren't there who's vaccinated. So as far as my thoughts are, I mean, I tend to lean towards masking. I started wearing a mask again myself a few weeks, a couple weeks ago, as the Delta variant became more prominent in Massachusetts. I might, you know, respectfully disagree with Mr. Buckley about whether we should or could take the step further, certainly many school districts are. But I also would say that, you know, I think although this, the variant that we're experiencing right now is much more transmissible, it, there has been no change in the, there appears to be no change in how sick kids actually get if they do get the virus, and, and so I, I don't feel, to me, like there's, I, I, you know, you could make the argument of, well, why wouldn't you just put the mask requirement in there, but I think there are reasons not to, and there is not that, you know, as long as we're creating that requirement, and we're encouraging people to wear masks whenever possible, I think that I'm, I think I'm okay at least to see how it goes, so.
All right. Dr. Daly?
Thank you. So, all right, hold on a second. All right, so I have a few thoughts on this, but I will say that, like Mr. McGowan, although I'm leaning in a particular direction, I really welcome this opportunity to hear what my fellow committee members think, and what the public thinks, because as Mr. Buckley said, you all have different perspectives than we do. So that's, that's just an opportunity to kind of get out there. As I kind of think about reform of mask mandates, there are three ideas that come to mind that put me leaning in that direction. One, kids largely are required to go to school. You know, there's options they can take, but for the most part, and the matter is, kids are going to school whether they would really like to or not, and as long as we're going to have them in our building, I think we have an obligation to make sure that the building is as safe as we can reason to be. Now, masks, although there are certainly drawbacks, and I really do welcome hearing the drawbacks that students have experienced or the parents have seen in how last year went, from my perspective, it doesn't seem to be too high a cost to ensure that that next bubble will shake. I'd say beyond that, again, kids have to come to school, which means we also have an obligation of making sure that we can accommodate all types of kids. And some kids have immunization issues, or they have, sorry, autoimmune issues, they're more at risk, they can't get vaccinated for whatever reason. There are more vulnerable members of school who have a right to come to school, and that we have to find a way to make that work. It seems like masking would be a safe path to that. And lastly, if COVID is still bad enough that contracting it means a 10 day quarantine, then in the interest of education, that's, that's not a small amount of time, that's not one or two days, that's a big amount of time interrupting a student. That happens twice in a year, there missing a large amount of class. So I think, again, with measures that we can make as a school policy to minimize the risk of that, are measures well worth considering. As I said, I welcome hearing more about that.
Go to the other side here. Follow-up and thoughts?
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts on this, too. Anyone that knows my position on this, I've never been supportive of masking our children at all. I don't see a point to. I definitely don't see any reason to go beyond the DESI recommendations. I want to understand how you're going to interpret that, however. So I'm a elementary school student, I'm not vaccinated, are they going to be pushed to put a mask on if their parent chooses that they should not be wearing a mask?
So we, the way I envision a strong recommendation is, through education, we're going to say that it's a vulnerability. Again, these are children that have not had the opportunity to be vaccinated, but I do see that, I do see that as a choice for parents to choose. With following this guide, that would be the choice for unvaccinated as well. I know I just said a moment ago for vaccinated, but it would be for both. DESI, DESI goes above and beyond that, so again, I'll just read the, the actual guidance that we'd be following. DESI and D P H strongly recommend, underline that all students in kindergarten through grade six, wear masks when indoors, except students who cannot do so due to medical conditions or behavioral needs. Masks are not necessary outdoors and may be removed while eating. DESI and D P H also strongly recommend, bold and underline, that unvaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students of grade seven and above, and unvaccinated students, I'm sorry, unvaccinated visitors, wear masks indoors in alignment with the state's advice. DESI says, DESI and D P H recommend that schools allow vaccinated students to remain on masks. So that, that's what we would be following. So it would be, it would be a strong recommendation for everyone K to six, and I think you're going to see a large number of students in that grade level because they don't have the choice to do that, but it wouldn't be required. A mandate would require it, whether that came from you, from the Board of Health. And I just will share, I didn't share this here, but I shared it at the Board of Health. Talking to other superintendents, you know, my larger groups, 2025, it's about a 60/40, this is, you know, I haven't talked to anyone this week, 60, 60 percent doing a mandate K-12, 40 percent following the guidance. Of that 40 percent, I've heard from a few today, they're hearing more and more Board of Health locally that are leaning in that direction. So that's what's starting to happen across the state, is that the Board of Health is taking it on, and that's, this is not a north for any issue, I think everyone's aware of that, but I just want to make that clear and be specific.
And I, you know, I feel like I'm responsible for my child's health, and I think all of you are responsible for your children's health, and that should be your choice, and I don't think our committee should decide that for you at all. The other comment I had was around the daily health screening, and I think you said it's a school testing, too.
Yeah.
It seems very, I hate to use the word, but segregated towards unvaccinated children.
Yeah.
You know, when you talk about listing out symptoms, this daily health training, most of you obviously know, you have to fill out a form every morning, I mean, there's, there's symptoms that vaccinated, you know, people are experiencing, so why separate them out in these specific instances?
So as I mentioned, that's, that's a, certainly something has come from our, from our teachers, Jean, as well. And the idea there is that everybody last year had to do it, the idea would be that the focus would be, you know, whether, whether it's, and I, I haven't decided yet what I would be recommending on that, to be honest with you, but it's a strong recommendation again, but I think the idea is that vaccinated people would not be asked to do it, because you don't need, so it would be the idea that it makes sense if you're unvaccinated, that you would maybe be asked, strongly recommended to continue to, because it's just those extra precautions that would be in place for the unvaccinated.
Please.
And, and similar to pool testing, that that's, and that's from the state, I mean, it's strongly recommended for unvaccinated, they don't really recommend it for the vaccinated individuals. And I think they want to focus our attention and resources onto supporting those that are unvaccinated and encouraging more people to get vaccinated. I think this is anticipating that vaccinations will be available for that younger age group in the coming months, and that those incentives will continue to say, you don't need to do this, you don't need to do that, this is another incentive to get vaccinated. That's my thinking behind why they may have written it down.
But I know that's more of the state guidance than your board or anything like that, but, I mean, moving in that direction to continue to separate our kids into one pocket versus another pocket, that's just possible.
I understand that.
All right. Ms. Embriano?
Just have one follow-up to that. If they're not, well, if the parent signed them up for the pool testing, right? And they're not required to be in the card, would you say that the parents of a vaccinated kid wants to put them into that pool testing anyway? And how would you know?
Say that again?
Saying my kids were in school and they're vaccinated, but I still filled out the form for them to be in the pool testing.
Yeah.
How would you know that?
I don't think we would, and it would be allowed in some cases. Again, I think, I, I need to go, you know, we've had one guy that just came out on Friday, so we're going to have a lot of time for more questions, the pre-class questions haven't come out, but I'm assuming that the reason is they're trying to control the resource. It's time consuming. And so they're trying to say vaccinated people, you don't need to worry about this, this is for the unvaccinated. It's a, what the COVID-19 routine safety checks did was provide that additional assurance for those who are not vaccinated. And that's really what, you know, when we weren't vaccinated, in the spring, part of why we implemented was, it was a nice gap to bridge, to bridge the gap to when we could get the vaccine. So now the idea is, we don't need to start that again for vaccinated people. Vaccinated people are vaccinated, and the unvaccinated are able to have that opportunity to have that safety check in place.
But there would not be anyone to stop the parents of a vaccinated?
If someone really, a vaccinated person really wanted to double-check the staff or students, we would be able to include them as well.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's the intention.
Okay. We'll go to the public in a second, just to be clear, so tonight, what you're asking for is us to approve the plan that it has stated right now, so there would not be a mask mandate, you would be following D E F C guidelines, and you're looking for a vote from us tonight on masks, correct, Dr. Daly?
Right, the follow, basically what we, I've said is that we're going to follow the, the Department of Health and DESI guidelines as outlined.
Okay, thank you. So, people on the Google Meet would like to speak, raise your hand in the room if you'd like to come down. Come on down. And we'll start, oh, and for the record, we do need you to state your name and address for the record.
Oh, am I going first? Okay. My name is Jody Cloney, and I live at 365 Park Street. I guess I just want to clarify that, what we're saying, Dr. Daly, is that whether or not your, your child is vaccinated will be exclusively on the honor system, correct? Like, we're not asking people to confirm whether or not they're vaccinated? And is that correct?
At, at this time, that is not something we're looking to do. There may be additional guidance that comes up, and there may be a scenario such as, in a contact tracing scenario, where providing that information might avoid, you know, a different scenario. But it's not something we're going to be asking kids as a condition to come to work.
Well, I mean, and I'm not asking for it to be a condition, I, I just want to clarify what you're asking them to vote on, and what you're asking, and what that includes is that, there's no actual documentation of what kids have been vaccinated and what kids haven't been vaccinated. So all of these guidelines that sort of go in different directions, it's just going to be a honor system thing. So if you're not vaccinated, and I tell the school nurse that my kids are vaccinated, they maybe just keep coming to school, even though they're close contacts, and even though they didn't meet whatever requirement, that's a possibility, right? Because we're not actually asking for any documentation as to whether or not you've been vaccinated.
No, I think if we're going to exempt people from a quarantine situation, and, and they're going to stay on exempt because of vaccinated, that's the point, that was Jeanine's question, was, that's the point where we might need that. They might be exempt for another reason, but that, we can't just be the honor system on exemption for the.
Okay. And I guess my other question is, in terms of whether or not kids, we're going to strongly recommend, which means basically whether or not you wear a mask is your choice, and we mentioned something about whether parents want their kids to or not to, my, my question would be, are we, if we're going to enforce my, a parent's request to not wear a mask, are we also going to enforce a parent, like if I want my child to wear a mask, are you going to police that? Like, if we're going to let parents sign out of masks, are we going to say, you know, whether your kid's vaccinated or not, I want my kids to be masked? So are you going to police both directions? If you're going to take things from parents and say, I feel strongly that my kid and that vaccinated kid should not wear a mask, are you going to say, watch out for kids? Are you going to keep an eye on the kids that are supposed to be wearing masks based on their parents' preference?
So I would say that we would be able to follow up with, with students. I, I trust the students, if you've told your students to wear the mask in school, I think most kids are going to wear them, I really do, and if there's a concern around that, I think that can be handled at the classroom level with younger kids. I mean, I know just like last year, there were certain kids that the masks would slip down a lot, the teachers had to watch, but I don't know that it's, I don't know that it would be necessary to really be checking up that often. I really do think the kids that, I think a lot of kids are going to be wearing masks, especially the, the unvaccinated kids, and I think that's going to be the culture, and I think those students are going to, I, I'm not really worried kids are going to not wear masks.
Well, I, I.
If the parents want them.
Right. But I am worried that kids are not going to wear masks. And it's, again, the.
Other kids or, or the kids that.
Any, I mean, any kids are going to, especially if they're friends. I mean, I, the 55% number, all, all of those kids could be vaccinated. So we're talking about 50, half, only half of them have chosen to get a vaccination. I would say that sort of a Venn diagram of people who believe in masks and people who believe in the vaccine probably, you know, overlap quite a bit. So we're talking about a significant number, 45% of those middle schoolers could have parents who are comfortable with them not vaccinating and not wearing a mask. That's like half, right? So I, I'm glad that you have faith that the kids are just going to, but when the consequence is a kid could be hospitalized or die, that feels like a, that is a risk that could happen. I, I mean, again, I understand that. Okay, I know. I'm saying though.
Guys, not, no, the person that's speaking only, please. Yes.
I'm sorry. I, I mean, when the consequence potential is for, and again, my understanding from the CDC guidance, which, again, we're not following CDC guidance, we're, so we're making a choice to say we're not going to follow the CDC. And I understand that we're following DECE guidance, and I wish masks wasn't a political thing, very much so, but that DECE person is, is appointed by a Republican governor. So those. So what I'm saying is, again, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to make it a political thing. I'm saying that is a, I'm saying it's a person appointed by someone whose job is political. That's not my fault. That is the system that set us. So what I'm saying is.
Okay, okay. Ms. Cloney, we have to keep moving on. Like, we, I, I understand your point. We do, we do have to keep moving on. If you have other points or questions.
So I just, I just wanted to clarify. So yes, there'll, there'll be just, what, 45% of those kids could be, that's a, that's a risk that we're willing to take. Yeah, I'd like you to weigh in on the fact that you're right now saying you're expecting kids, but when they don't, I mean, this premise goes with people who are not going to send their kids to school with masks. So 45% of those. I'm asking you, if 45% of unvaccinated kids shows up to school on September 8th, if you're going to let them all just walk around, and this is going to continue to be your recommendation against CDC guidance?
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Guys, let's keep, Ms. Cloney, the only thing that I would add to this in, in a response, I do not believe the teacher's job is policing. I do think that. Let me be clear.
Do you think they should die? Will they do their job because no one has to wear a mask?
If, if you as a parent, if, if you as a parent want to know if your student is wearing a mask, I think it's perfectly acceptable to say to the teacher, I do want, you know, Johnny wearing his mask, and to check in and say, has he been doing that? And ask the student. But I don't think that the teacher has to go through a list of 22 kids in the class and decide who is and who is not doing it. Every, and, and the reality is it also may be not a, every time. Like, I may say to my student, if you're in the hallway, if you're going to the bathroom, I want you to wear your mask. But if you're sitting at your desk, I feel fine when you're taking the mask off. And so I think a parent should be able to check in with the teacher and say, can you tell me if he's doing what, what we've talked about at home? And if he is or not, you can get that information. But I don't think every teacher's job is going to be policing each student.
No, and the only reason I brought that up is because it was brought up by a committee member that whether or not students would be asked to put on a mask and follow the DECE guidelines if they were unvaccinated. And like, if a parent had given.
But the DECE guideline is not a requirement. It, it says it's recommended.
Again, the.
Okay.
Anyway, I guess what I'm saying to you is, if, if the indicates being in such a room, I have serious concerns. So what I'm saying to you is, if half of the students show up or less, and we know only half of them are vaccinated, and if none of them are wearing masks, does that change your recommendation for how we move forward?
I, I would say we will.
Point of order, sorry. You're way past your. Second time, but for right now, I think it's.
And right now, as I said, we are voting on the guidelines that we're doing today on August 16th. That doesn't mean it won't change, depending on what happens. If we open schools and there's 50 positive tests, we might have to make changes. But right now, what the guidelines are saying from DESE is what we're voting on accepting. Okay, we're going to move on?
Just to clarify, recommended, recommended is not forced, correct?
There's not, we are not voting on a mask mandate today.
Right.
The DESE guidelines suggest, they say strongly recommended for somebody that is not vaccinated to wear a mask. And for people that are vaccinated, there is no recommendation. Correct. Testing, testing will, there's different types of testing, as Dr. Daley said. Well, hang on, that'd be the.
No, Mr. Buckley, if I may, off the speaking, speaking from the, speaking from the floor has to be done in the front with their name and, and address.
True.
And we, you don't want to get into the back and forth.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Courtney Green, 18 Magnolia Street.
Go ahead.
So as we're all very well aware, state DECE school guidelines left it up to the individual town to decide if a mask mandate was necessary based on the numbers in those towns. Because not all towns are the same. This morning, Baker also reiterated, he's not considering a statewide mask mandate because the high vaccination rate and low hospitalization rate doesn't warrant it. As of the last weekly town data report on mask.gov, 99.9% of North Reading residents do not currently have COVID. There is no community spread or clusters in our town. Over, of the cases over the summer, none required hospitalization, none resulted in deaths. For the big picture, the overall state of Massachusetts, again, based on mask.gov, out of 7.1 plus million people, 99.9% of Massachusetts residents do not actively have COVID. There's about 9,000 estimated that currently do. So these, we're talking small numbers. There's good news stories, but just to give some numbers to it. From the Board of Health meeting last week, the number of residents in North Reading vaccinated increased slightly, and the North Reading vaccination rates continue to be on par with Massachusetts and well above the national average. That's good news. Based on the numbers, we are in excellent position to start this year, follow DECE guidelines, a strong recommendation of masks, and not requiring it. There is no data in our town at this point in time to justify putting a child in a mask unless a parent chooses to do so. Governor Baker's also said, given the guidelines, experts have wildly differing views, not just a little different, completely different views on it. COVID. For every study that says masks work, there's another expert with a study that masks don't work. It's not a clear cut thing, and that's part of the problem. I personally got COVID while wearing a mask from somebody else who had a mask on, while the entire state had a mask mandate. And ironically, none of my family got COVID from me when I was unmasked. And I was, got my COVID test towards the end of my COVID. None of them got it. So COVID is, you can't control it. You can't. You can't contain it. The school is already going above and beyond the DECE guidelines with kids facing forward at snack time, you're having other, other seats at lunchtime. So there are additional precautions being taken above and beyond for those parents and students who would want to wear a mask. So they're not going to be next to somebody when they're eating without their mask. And I feel for the parents with high-risk children. If my child was high-risk, it would be a very difficult decision to send them to school or not. But I certainly would not be relying on some seven-year-old kiddies who's got their $2 mask on Target that's hanging below their nose half the time to be the one who's protecting my high-risk child. That would not.
The doubt after he treated me about the other stuff, but this is just like a slap in the face.
Putting a mask on a child to protect others is a feel-good measure for adults, but is not effective in reality because.
Random. It's like, but you don't care about my kid.
Please, please do not speak until your call done.
There was, I mean, there's plenty of Twitter pictures from school last year of when everybody was socially distanced.
And Botwell said they see no need for masks right now.
Dr. Daley, can you meet people that are speaking?
And Botwell said she never.
So per CDC data, the 2018-19 flu season with vaccine availability was more deadly than a year and a half of COVID with unvaccinated kids. There was no psychological mass panic then. Unfortunately, in both situations, flu and COVID, the death rates have been low. And if any deaths, it's unfortunate, but it has been low. And for elementary school kids who are least impacted by COVID, have been hardest hit by the COVID restrictions from the previous year. Mentally and academically, which should not be underestimated, because all we hear about is physical, but you're not talking about the mental and academic impact. So without objective data supporting mask mandates, there is no reason to put them in a mask.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to the computer, Mr. Bocelli. If you'd like to unmute and speak.
How you doing, Joseph Bocelli, 31 Cedar Street? What is the plan for pre-K students? I have a three-and-a-half-year-old going to be going to little school this fall.
Daley?
They would follow the same recommendations for K.
Same recommendations, Mr. Bocelli.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Please, please unraise your hand, Mr. Bocelli, because I will get confused otherwise. You go next?
Hello, my name is Rebecca Mooney. I live on 99 Central Street, and I'm going into my junior year at North Reading High School. I come before the school committee today to urge you not to mandate masks in school now or ever. COVID restrictions hit halfway through my freshman year. So I haven't had a full high school year with in-person normal learning, no masks, no distancing. We are very fortunate to be able to open up the schools next year, but it still won't be a normal year if later on we have to end up wearing masks. Already, this generation is at a disadvantage because of our iPhones. We use them as a way to avoid conversation in awkward situations, and because of this, students have a harder time making eye contact. Now add the masks. Students are being put into a world where they don't have to smile at people, talk to people, or make eye contact. It is making this generation antisocial. As someone who has had a hard time making friends for most of my life, it is putting me at an even worse rate of making friends, and I know that I am not the only one. Never before in my life have I felt so alone than I did last year. This is due to being in lockdown, but also due to not being able to give or receive a smile to people. I had a teacher come up to me on the last day of school and say, I have never seen your face. Think about that. In over 100 days, my teacher had never seen my face. I wonder how many other people only can recognize me when I'm wearing a mask. Now I want to move into more personal territory. As you can see, I have a congenital amputation. It is the most noticeable thing about my physical appearance despite the fact that I am so much more than physically and mentally. When you add the mask, it is one of the only things people can identify me with. They don't know what I look like. They know me as the one-handed girl. Even though I love my arm, I don't want it to be the only thing about me that stands out. Masks are incredibly harmful to students of all ages. They make, they keep us from being social, they cause and irritate many health issues like acne, and it takes away our individuality. So I urge you as a student in your school district and as a member of the North Reading community not to mandate masks in school for children of all ages, K through 12. To quote Benjamin Franklin, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Thank you.
Very, very well spoken. And, and we do appreciate hearing from students. And thank you for coming and, and sharing your thoughts tonight. Okay, go over to left again.
I have another student for you.
Go ahead.
My name is Noel Redloff, 29 Duane Drive. I'm just going to, I'm just here to introduce the, the little one here. But just, Courtney got into some really interesting statistics, talking about, you know, North Reading specific. But, you know, I, my background's in public health, so I like to step back, look at things from a broader perspective. And of course, my most important concern is my own children. So masks are obviously a very political topic, very hot topic, clearly. But I did come across a study, which I think is interesting, that in Sweden last year when everything was open with no masking. And if you've been to Sweden, I have, it's cold, so people are inside. Not one single child death in the school system that was fully open, fully operational with masks. However, I have seen in my own children the effect of wearing masks and what it's done to their lives. Now, this is my daughter, Ray, and I did not ask her to speak, she asked me to speak. So Ray is nine, and she's going into third grade. So you have some things you wanted to share? You don't have.
Welcome, Ray. You can speak.
You can just talk to them.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
What school are you at, Ray?
Which school are you at? Yes, go to the back. You have to speak loud so they can hear you. Okay. Okay. And what do, you, you, you don't have to share, but you were talking about some of the things that kids feel like when they're wearing masks.
Well, some kids, I do it a lot. I chew on my mask, and then it rubs against your face. Damn, devil.
Anything else? No.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Going to go to the Google Meet again, Amy Hannan, if you'd like to unmute and speak.
Yeah, how you doing? This is Chris Hannan. I'll be speaking. I live at 5 Upton Avenue. I guess I really don't want to get into too much of what some people already covered here. My goal, I think, is to say that I've seen the impact this has had on one of my middle school children who's now going to be in high school. And to me, the mask, they lose a part of their identity. They can't see each other. They go to lunch, they sit in the same seat 10 feet apart. Their social interaction's suffering from this. They start to come home from school, tend to stay in their room, stay on electronic devices instead of going to live their normal life that these kids should be. I just ask all of you right now to look from a common sense approach here. I don't, you know, I've had COVID, I'm vaccinated. I'm not here to tell people how they're going to choose or what they need to choose. But we're sitting here with some people wanting to have all these young kids vaccinated. For a vaccine that's for emergency purposes only right now, that hasn't been fully approved by the FDA. So I respect other parents' decisions not to have their kids take this. Let's look at the facts here of what we see, what we hear, and what we know. And I think we all know from what we've seen, that kids can go back to school, they can take their masks off, and they can live a normal life. We've taken a year and a half away from these kids. They're never going to get this back. If we continue this, is next year going to be the Echo variant? And the following year, the Fox variant? At some point, we have to live our lives. The damage we're doing now is going to be irreparable if we don't move forward. That's all I have to say. Thanks for the time.
There's no audio on the Zoom.
We have no audio on this end. No audio on the Zoom call.
We have no audio on the phone either. What's happening?
Okay, for everybody in the Google Meet, we apologize, we lost the call here. So, or if you want to start again, Simone?
Yeah, could I?
Okay.
Well, my name is Stuart Simone, and I live at 7 Deerfield Place. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my sister, who is a student at, here at North Reading High School. The past years have been difficult for all kids, but my sister's had a much harder time than most. In the fall of 2019, she was diagnosed with a brain condition which caused painful and debilitating symptoms. She missed the majority of eighth grade because of this. She ended up having brain surgery three weeks prior to the world shutting down because of COVID. It was extremely hard on her both physically and mentally. When she was finally able to go back to school with everyone else, some of her symptoms were better than before the surgery, but she still suffered from headaches, which were made worse from wearing a mask all day long. Unfortunately, this is her new normal, something, she also has had trouble breathing at times due to her asthma, which is something that many other kids here in North Reading struggle with as well. Because Jessica missed so much school the past two years, learning can and has been a struggle for her. Not being able to hear the teachers and appear as well enough because of the masks doesn't help, and not being able to see teachers' students' expressions feels very isolating. In Jessica's words, "Many kids do not want to wear masks, and respectfully, it makes everything worse." There is a very large percentage of kids here in North Reading who are depressed and anxious in high school, and we just want and need some normalcy back. And also, the point of perspective, I was the class of 2020, the class that didn't have any graduation, the class that graduated over Zoom. So I can definitely attest to wanting and needing normalcy again. And speaking for myself now as a college student, I know that the mental health offices at my college are overrun with students suffering from anxiety and depression, and this is just getting worse and worse. For my sister and all the kids here in North Reading schools, please let them have a choice as to whether or not to wear a mask regardless of vaccine status. Thank you.
Try to go by how long people have been waiting. I'm going to go over them.
You need me to move over?
No, it's fine.
I'm kind of lying.
I know you, I think you still hear.
You know I do, for sure. Okay? I promised my remarks were just over three minutes, but I have to add one more thing. So we talked about the, about the daily health screener, and to be honest, I find it to be discriminatory if we are only talking about unvaccinated kids that have to do it every day. I'd much rather see everyone have to do it. And I say that because I'm just going to take one specific example. Seventy-four percent of the 469 cases in the Provincetown outbreak here in Massachusetts were fully vaccinated. And of those 74%, this is probably the bigger thing for us, 79% were symptomatic. So we may be missing kids if they're not taking that daily screener. I have no problem with the daily screener, but I think perhaps it needs to be everybody rather than just the unvaccinated kids. And I'm so sorry, I didn't say my name, Lena Simone, 7 Deerfield Place. I'm here to speak on why specifically I don't believe kids should be forced to wear masks at school. At the Board of Health meeting last Thursday, we learned that a number of COVID, the number of COVID cases under 20 since July 1st have been nine total, three under age 11, zero from ages 12 to 15, and six from 16 to 19. That translates to a positivity rate for kids of 0.00005% of all North Reading residents. If we're masking our children based upon this minuscule number, what will it take for the masks to come off? Why didn't we mask our kids? Not that I'm giving you guys ideas, but why didn't we mask our kids during any given flu season when the risk of death to them was greater? In terms of whether or not kids are at more risk now than in 2020, I cite an NPR article, published on August 10th of this year. Yvonne Moldenato, a professor of Pediatrics and Infectious Disease, states, quote, "I am not seeing any patterns that suggest the virus is more virulent or more serious or more severe in children than it was before this variant happened," end quote. Many children have developed mental problems stemming from social isolation and others from deferred medical care during the peak of the outbreak last year. Quote, "These kinds of indirect impacts of COVID have actually had a much bigger volume impact on pediatric ICU capacity than the direct count of COVID kids," said Mark Wichita, the CEO of the Children's Hospital Association. In states where data was available, less than 2% of all COVID-19 cases required hospitalization, and 0.0020.03 were fatal. The article goes on to state that, quote, "The numbers appear to show that severe illness, hospitalization, and death are rare in children infected with coronavirus." So the question is, why don't we mask? Well, I'm going to quote here, "The typical mask you buy in a drugstore is not really effective in keeping out virus," comma, "which is small enough to pass through material." This is a statement that was made by Dr. Anthony Fauci and to his colleague Sylvia Burwell in an email that was only uncovered via a lawsuit that was brought by the Informed Action Consent Network. A number of studies that were done by a researcher at the National Institutes of Health found that exhaled droplets can be small enough to become airborne and slip through mask pores. This is a quote from that summary. "Most particles in exhaled breath are smaller than four microns, with a median between 0.7 and 1.0 microns." One of these studies additionally found that the fine particles in these influenza-type viruses contain 8.8 times more viral copies than did the porous ones. Another study continued and said the most infectious particles were smaller than one micron. People may cite studies showing the benefit of mask-wearing, but unless they are random controlled studies, or RCTs as they're called, the results are not reliable. In addition, these studies are typically done using mannequins, not actual people, let alone children who are constantly touching and contaminating their masks and not wearing tightly fitted ones like N95. So what's the harm of wearing a mask? In a study of 25,000 children published on February 15th of this year, 24 distinct health issues were found to be associated with harming schoolchildren physically, psychologically, and behaviorally. Fifty-three percent had increased headaches, 50% had difficulty concentrating, 37% had drowsiness and fatigue, 29% had difficulty breathing. And again, as a mother of a child with asthma, I can attest to this. Nearly one-third had sleep issues, and a fourth had new fears. Please do not force our children to suffer needlessly. Give them the choice regarding whether or not to wear a mask.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to the computer, William Cushing-Candelario.
Thanks for saying my name. This is Bill Cushing-Candelario from North Reading, 8 Susan Drive, North Reading, Mass. I have a, I guess a question that I can, I want to ask the superintendent and the school committee, something that I've been struggling with beyond, you know, wearing masks, not wearing masks. I get it from both sides. I mean, you know, I was one of those people that I never get sick, and I still don't. I try and, I scratch my head and still wonder why people get sick, but it wasn't until, you know, I got married and have a child that is, has an immune deficiency. And one of the things I've been taught is, growing up, is you look out for those that can't look out for themselves, playing sports, you look out for other people on your team. And in the military, we're taught to never leave a comment behind. So giving that, given those examples, you know, I think of my son, you know, who's one of the people that if he caught this, he's dead. I mean, there's no doubt based on like the type of immune deficiency he has. We have family that has, what do you call it, autistic, you know, cousins that they always stick up for, they always, you know, come to bat for. We have other cousins that have disabilities, physical disabilities, that they always like, you know, make sure that they're okay, you know, no one bothers them, like if they get picked on, that, those kind of things. But when it comes to my son, one of the things I'm having a problem with, I'm trying to struggle is like, what do I tell him when it comes, when it's his turn? When kids, you know, who's got his back? Like, who's going to look out for him with this stuff? And I know this stuff is, you know, you have all these data that says, yeah, there's a small chance that it could happen. Well, that's a small chance I don't want to take. So do I undo what I do, what I've taught him and just say, hey, just take care of your own? I mean, this is the kind of thing I'm trying to figure out because it's a touchy subject. But I'm trying to teach my kids to be good to society, but if the society is not being good to him, how do you explain that to an eight-year-old? I mean, someone said earlier, you know, I'm going to, you know, my kids are my kids, and I'm going to, you know, we should be able to take care of them in any way we can. And that's my right. Okay, it's your right, just as my right to just take care of my kids and teach them what I teach them. But I've always, I've always been about good. I've always been about the greater good, the greater, like the bigger picture. But I'm at a, I'm at a point where it's like, what do you say to these kids? What do you say to my son who's saying, how come no one's looking out for me? I have to basically tell him what I've been, you know, taught in a not-so-good way, but I just need help from you guys to kind of, you know, paint that picture for me and tell me what I should be telling them. I'm done.
Thank you, Bill. I mean, I don't know if anybody watched this. Tom and Jane. Dr. Daley?
I would just say that, you know, my opinion is the superintendent following the Department of Health guidelines, Department of Education guidelines, strongly recommending that all students should be advised of the grades if wear masks when indoors. I think that is, you know, what the health experts in our state are saying, you know, we should be doing to protect our children. So I wouldn't be here if I didn't feel that kids would be safe. If I felt this was dangerous, you know, again, we're not going beneath what's being recommended by the Department of Health in the state of Massachusetts.
No, this, sorry, this goes, I get, I get that part. I'm talking about beyond that. Like, forget the fact that this COVID thing's out there. I'm talking about how does someone that's looking out for other people where it's not, people are not being, people are not looking out for him? I mean, I can't tell my eight-year-old, go read the CDC guidelines. I mean, he's not going to understand probably like 75% of that. I'm just looking for advice as a parent or as a, as a human being that's going to do good for society. What do you tell an eight-year-old that has a problem that if he gets this stuff, he's dead, and he knows that, whereas other people that have disabilities are going to be okay? And, you know, my son's there to help them out, but no one's, basically, no one's got his back. Like, what do I tell him? Forget the CDC, forget all that stuff. What do I say to him when no one's going to, you know, look out for him when it comes to his turn?
I appreciate your thoughts and your concern. The only comments that I would make are two comments. Number one is that there are points on both sides, and I do hear the point. I also think there are other students that are struggling with masks, and there's legitimate reasons why some people don't want to wear them. The other comment I would just say is, if there are students that are particularly vulnerable, and, you know, and I privately reached out to Dr. Daley about this, you know, after receiving an email from somebody, I think you should raise the issues to the school as well. Like, we don't want somebody being in danger. And I also don't think that if kids are grouped together and there's masks, I don't know that that's even enough to protect a child that is vulnerable. And if there are very serious health issues where somebody catching COVID could end up, you know, having a very serious issue, I think that should be raised to the school. You know, we make accommodations for students that have disabilities or, you know, of different types. And so I would just encourage you to reach out to the school if you do have a child that has a very serious medical issue. I appreciate you making your comments today. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I'm just trying to understand, only because there are certain things that are out there, like you can't have peanut butter in schools. Well, they don't have a problem with peanut butter, but yet you got to be mindful of that stuff. I'm just, I'm just wondering if people are mindful of the other stuff. That's all.
I appreciate your comments. We're going to move on to the next one, and I'm going to move on to another person on the computer because they've been waiting for a while. Heather McLeod, would you like to unmute?
Hi, my name is Heather McLeod. I live over on 16 Silvia Road. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much to Dr. Daley and to the board. I understand a lot of these things are beyond your control, and you guys are doing the best that you can, and I really appreciate it. I just wanted to take a moment to speak to a certain population that people may not be aware of. There are kids with special needs, certain things, autism, and they can't tolerate the masks for some of them. And for other children, the masks cover up their faces, and a lot of autism and social learning is being able to see people's faces. So part, that's been a problem with the children wearing the masks in addition to other things. But I just wanted to, you know, just consideration for the kids with special needs who wouldn't be able to tolerate masks because of sensory reasons, and just, you know, for the, how it's affecting them too. And I'm sure everyone is considering that, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you very much for your comments. Over here, trying to go by how people.
Good evening. Janine, margin 11 Hillside Road. I actually have prepared a little statement in opposition of the mask mandates, but I also wanted to speak to, not specifically to Bill, but to any parent that's in that situation. I have to say, I'm incredibly sympathetic as a healthcare professional, but a child that's that fragile would be just as fragile with influenza or so many of the other viruses that are, you know, endemic to, to where we live, and we would be in masks for the rest of our life, and that is assuming masks are even effective. But anyway, I'm just going to read this quickly. "I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to mask mandates for our children. Our children have had masks on their face for a year and a half already. Because before me have clearly depicted some of the very real emotional, psychological, and developmental concerns surrounding the chronic wearing of face masks in children. Additionally, there is a potential for very real physical problems, including fungal and bacterial infections, disruption of the oral biome leading to gum disease and tooth decay, and to me, most concerning is the potential for chronic hypercapnia, which is increased CO2, resulting in an acidotic state with general systemic ill effects. And these kids are wearing these masks very long. I continue to hear false science, but to date, and I work in science, no one has shown me the science that proves that masking children for six to eight hours a day has a significant effect on reducing morbidity or mortality with COVID-19. In fact, widespread masking flies in the face of everything we know about droplet-sized illnesses. I don't believe it is the job of parents to prove to you that unmasking children is safe. It is your job to prove to us that masking children is necessary, and I don't believe you've done that. I reiterate, our children have been in masks for 18 months now. If we are following the science, what does the science say about the long-term use of masks in children in elementary school? Who should be providing the masks? Which masks are deemed both safe and effective? Is there a standard that should be followed for breaks and the disposal and changing of masks? Or is simply wrapping our children's face in any available material so as long as their mouth and nose are covered sufficient? As a 30-year critical care nurse, I can honestly say I have never before seen rhetoric passed as science. Anthony Fauci knew that when he made, knew that when he made his initial statement about masks. The comments he made then are the fact that I have known them for over 30, excuse me, years. It seems we have imbued these masks with magical power that simply does not exist. I suspect masking is less about public health and more symbolic in a way to elevate fear to what end I can't say, except it seems more political than health-related. And this is not easy for me to say because I have seen what has happened to healthcare professionals who dare to question the narrative. Massachusetts has an extremely high vaccination rate, and I would add a relatively high natural immunity as well, even though people refuse to recognize that. So I would love to hear the rationale for masking children. I would like to hear the science of masking children. I would like to hear the science of masking children. There is no evidence that children are significantly impacted by COVID-19 and anecdotal situations aren't going to convince me differently because the stats have made that very clear. Nor are they implicated in the spread. I would like to know what the end game is because it's certainly not to eradicate COVID-19. The school committee has been tasked with a decision that challenges their knowledge base and I appreciate their feelings of inadequacy, but I remind them, they do not represent public health officials. They represent the families of North Reading and the families of North Reading would like to have a choice in the health decisions that impact the emotional, mental, psychological and physical health of their children. Thank you very much.
Right, over here.
Hi, my name is Alana Hill and I live on 30 Old Coach Road in North Reading. I am a 2020 graduate from North Reading. So I personally experienced, uh, when COVID first started, you know, we got, school was shut down in March, I didn't get a senior prom, I didn't get any senior activities. We got somewhat of a graduation, but it was definitely not the graduation that we all had hoped for and wanted. I also attended, I go to Mass College Pharmacy in Boston. I do work in healthcare right now at PDA Dental, so I am around aerosol, non-aerosol patients. I see kids and adults come in every day. We, you know, you have to wear a mask just because it's healthcare and seeing the little kids that come in who throw tantrums and cry because they don't want to wear the mask is upsetting because they don't know what is going on. And to feel like, to parents and kids to feel like you don't have a choice is disturbing. And I think that, I feel for the parents who have immune disorders or have kids who may have immune disorders who are more susceptible to getting COVID or, you know, being hospitalized. I do feel for them and I do think that they should have a choice over what they and their kids do. Wear a mask, go to school with a mask. But I also think that parents and kids who choose that they don't want to wear a mask shouldn't have to, whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated. It more just comes down to a choice, I think. And, you know, people are making it political and saying that Republicans are, you know, selfish by not wearing masks and not wearing vaccinated, but it's a choice. And I think it just comes down to that where people should have a choice and, you know, you shouldn't feel forced to. And I personally don't, you know, if I got COVID, I wouldn't want to give it to someone who has immune disorders. But I think that if that's the case, then they should be putting themselves, you know, in a mask and protecting themselves. I don't think that everyone should have to do that because we should have freedom. It's America, we deserve to have the freedom, it's, you know, it just comes down to a choice. And I don't want to continue going on with feeling like I have to be forced to do something. And I'm not enrolled in school right now because they are requiring the vaccine and I personally just don't want to get it because it scares me. And, you know, COVID is just like the flu or any other thing. If you're vaccinated or not vaccinated, you're still, you can still get it and you can still transmit it as much as someone who's not vaccinated. And I'm not enrolled in school right now and they are, even if you're vaccinated, they're still making you do weekly testing and wear a mask. So it kind of comes down to the point where it's like, why get vaccinated or don't? If you still have to follow protocols, you know? So I just think that kids should definitely have a choice and I think that it's good that you guys are letting kids have that choice.
Thank you very much. Clearly my graduation speech in 2020 was not very good. Over here.
Uh, my name is Tracy Coughs. I live at 70 Oak Hill Road in North Reading. Uh, and I think the point that I just wanted to make is this discussion, if nothing else tonight, has shown me that it's going to be very contentious moving forward, no matter what. And so I would just like to make sure that the school is taking into account whatever happens, watching that kids aren't sort of bullying kids in either direction. Cause I know, I go to work, I work in a lot of different places. There've been a lot of different protocols for different places, for masks, not masks. And I have seen adults doing it to each other for months, whether you, both directions. And I just would like to know that the school is at least going to be aware of that and think about it because I think it is going to happen. The kids are listening to everything that the adult is saying. I'm going to be honest, the adults aren't always handling themselves very well with all of this and the kids are seeing that. And I'm worried that that's going to play into the school system in the same way. So I just would like to point out that I hope the school kind of has some sort of plan in mind for making sure that, you know, if they aren't wearing masks, that they're not making fun of the three kids in class that are or whatever it is, so.
Thank you for bringing that up. I, I think it's something that's very much on our, on our minds, um, with any of these issues that are divisive. To try to make sure that anyone's not feeling pressured one way or the other. And that's one concern that parents feel if they want to tell the kids to wear a mask and there's other kids going to tease them and say, don't wear them, or vice versa, right? So I think that's something we're going to address. I think, I think it's important to say too, that there's a lot of views tonight that are shared. If the Board of Health or the state comes in and makes a decision one way or another, at, at a certain point, it's out of our hands. In a lot of ways, if the state hadn't just done this, it would be a lot easier. We wouldn't be having this discussion and people wouldn't be able to share their thoughts and opinions and voices. So in some ways, it's frustrating that the state didn't just do, it would have made my job a lot easier if the state had just told us what to do, one way or the other. Um, by leaving us to locals, it invited a lot of local discussion, which clearly needed to happen. People needed to, to share what was on their minds. So that's going to continue. So I, I think having civil discourse, as we've seen for tonight, and continuing that in school, parents modeling that for their kids and that, you know, we, we want to make sure that students are also respecting one, one another and their individual choices as well, um, and looking out for each other. So that's something we're going to continue to, to speak about in all aspects, including this.
And then one other point, I did agree, and I not going to remember her name, but she was sitting here saying that the questionnaires, I understand doing it unvaccinated, but if vaccinated people do get it, they could have symptoms too. Do I do?
We can reconsider.
Doing that across, I mean, I have multiple kids, it was a pain in the butt every morning, I'm not going to lie, but, you know, I, it does seem like it makes more sense to have everyone do that and just to group.
Sure, I appreciate that suggestion.
Thank you. And, and I completely, I just want to say I completely agree with the thoughts also. I mean, and I think all the parents here too, we have to make sure that we tell our students that as well. You know, if it's a decision, then, you know, there can't be anybody being ostracized if they're the only kid wearing or the only kid not wearing it. So I think, you know, we need to reiterate throughout whatever that was. Thank you very much. Uh, Lauren Bocelli? Lauren Bocelli?
Hi, how are you?
Welcome.
Well, I think, I think, thank you. First, I'd like to say that I sincerely.
Lauren, can you begin? Lauren, can you begin? You begin with your name.
Begin with your name and where you.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Lauren Bocelli, 18 North Street. There have been so many impactful and extremely emotional comments made by other parents. And I, my husband and I have three children on the school systems, uh, well, two of them out of the three so far. And we were curious about the pre-K intro as well, as someone had previously commented. We have an eight-year-old who's going into second grade and she, just the, just the detriment this kid has experienced over the past 18 months has been overwhelming. The emotional upset, I asked her today, you know, how did you feel when you wore a mask, Aria? And she said, I was miserable. They would yell at me when I took, when my mask fell down and she said, I was scared. I was scared to go to school. So many of, of these things and, and, you know, this personal impact on our life, um, our personal life that we've witnessed with our child in, you know, in the hood school, um, has been very emotional and it has taken a toll. And I think we all are kind of, you know, in agreement that that is the case with this, with this. You know, mask wearing, not now mask wearing. The science really, you know, doesn't back it, doesn't back it up where it should be mandated. I highly disagree personally that anyone should be forced to do anything. When forced, the word force comes into play, that really bothers me as a person, as an individual. To each his own. If I had a child that had a severe immune deficiency or a major issue, I would probably feel differently. I fortunately, I do not, and I feel for all that do. I would like to cite the parent, the Parental Rights and Responsibilities Act of 1995, which specifically states, governed by the Supreme Court, clearly states to preserve the common law tradition that allows parental choices to prevail in healthcare decision for a child unless, by neglect or refusal, the parental decision will result in danger to the life of the child or result in serious physical injury to the child. I have posted this online. There is an article that you can look, this is an act. There should be no forcing of anything. It is a parent's choice. You know your child, I know mine, and I know it's not good for my child. And if it's not good, if it is good for your child to wear a mask and, you know, we want your kid, like everybody should have friends. Maybe we can arrange meetings with your child that does have a, an issue or whatever the case may be. Let's set it up. These kids need social interaction. The depression that we have witnessed within our family over the past 18 months with our eight-year-old, eight-year-old daughter, has been overwhelming. That's all I'm going to say, but I appreciate you letting me speak. And I, Dr. Daley, you've been amazing for the past two years. Our child has been in the school system. We appreciate the communication very much in our family and respect your choices, all of you. I respect all of your choices with your children and that is the way that it should be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Think our last comment.
Hi, Jeff Bobwell, 13, Charlotte Drive. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things. First, any of the speakers that question the compassion of those that just might be against the mask mandate. And also just with Chris, I know you made a comment on, um, you don't think the cost of wearing the mask is too high. So I just want to give you my own personal take. From the time my son was two, even before two, when we first noticed, they first noticed that he was having mental health issues. We did everything we could to put him through occupational therapy, speech, group counseling so he could learn to socialize. And we did that multiple days for a decade. And he want to talk about the cost of wearing a mask, for us it was everything. We lost it. Every step we made along the way. His love of sports, his friends that he made, gone. His love of chorus in school because he couldn't sing, gone. So if you want to question whether I can empathize with somebody because you might have a pre-existing condition, I can. My question is, when you say, what should I tell my son? What should I tell him? Why do I have to sacrifice it all? Right? When I, when we came here last year and said, you have pre-existing conditions, can, can we get the mask off? It wasn't, okay, you can take the mask off, go to school. Everybody do this to make sure my son's okay. No, it was you can go in that group over there and stay healthy by yourself with your group. It wasn't, everybody accommodate me. What do I tell my kids? I tell them life is hard, it's not fair and it's never going to be fair. My kids are going, my son is going into probably the most important years of his life where I'm wondering if he's going to get past the hurdles to function in adult life if God forbid I'm not here. And if you take that away, you take away his ability to socialize, I get it. I get the state might do it. But why are we going to start at the most restrictive point? Begin there and then just say, oh, down the road, we'll take the mask off. If it, there's nothing, if, if you want to win me over with the mask, don't give me the, you're going to kill somebody, you don't care, you're the devil. Read your own on sign that says everything about caring and love and hope, okay? I don't know, so that's all. I, I, I just wish you could see that it's not, you know, certain people are Republicans because you don't want to wear a mask, that we, we all have our own reasons. And, and if you want, if you, I don't want to make it political, but if you want to follow up on a comment, it was a Republican president that brought you this vaccine while you were all out there screaming, don't take it. Maybe that's why it's only 60%. But again, I don't want to get departments, but it will light up when you bring it up. Just try to understand that it's not all. I don't care about them or I do care about them and we're making decisions that's based on the best interest of our own kids. And that's, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. He wasn't the last one. We're going to go, we have a couple online here. Heidi, CC. Dr. Daley, you may have to unmute her.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Heidi.
Okay, Heidi Candelario, 8 Susan Drive, North Reading. I just want to follow up and I can say, as a human being, I can appreciate, um, everybody's opinions on this matter. We're all on different places of the spectrum as far as how we're impacted by what's going on. And I don't think it's been without challenges for every family. What I do find disturbing though, is when I hear people say, I see no reason for masks, okay? So if my one child is the one that cannot attend school, that should be a damn good reason for anyone to care. And it doesn't mean that the whole school community needs to accommodate my child. But I don't know what the other alternatives are. Should I quit my job to homeschool my child? Should I, I don't know, take out a loan to pay for an expensive private school? Should I settle for less? I'm not really sure. Those are things I guess I'll be left to deal with on my own because those are supposedly our own problems. But I will say to everyone that questions being forced to do things, for example, the mask, which many people did without problem last year. And I understand the masks, I mean, they're hard on everyone and I get that. But do you complain about, um, dress codes? Do you complain about all the other rules in schools that everybody follows blindly that are not legally mandated? Um, are we going to allow children to come to school covered in peanut butter? In an anaphylactic peanut allergy classroom because that's their personal choice? I mean, where do you draw the line? This is an incredibly slippery slope. To get to the point where we're just going to say, yes, there's these recommendations. Yes, all these medical experts are implementing and recommending these practices. Many other school systems around us are implementing precautions and they're not recommendations. I mean, this all confuses me and I'm trying to not make it personal, but it is personal. And people that have extenuating circumstances, and I'd say we fall into that category. Yes, of course, there are children who need the social communication, that need the visuals. Those should be people who are exempted, like your child that you just spoke about should have been exempted from the mask for medical reasons. Those people should be so far off as outliers, they should not pose a grave risk to public health. This virus is very contagious. It's not like my little decision doesn't impact everybody else. I mean, we don't let kids come to school with weapons. I mean, we're more concerned about like, there's rules in the handbook about chewing gum and what the consequences are. But there's like a potentially deadly virus out there that's taken down the world for the last 18 months. Call it whatever you want, believe it or not, science is real. The data is there. I haven't seen one person die from wearing a mask. I haven't even seen substantiated research saying how harmful it is, but I get it's inconvenient. I get nobody wants to wear them. I get that as a human. But what is the benefit of not having these precautions? If it means even one kid can't go to school or one kid gets very sick or one kid dies? And don't tell me about all the other things kids can die from because we know they can't. But we do plenty of things in school. They can't even wear flip flops for safety reasons. We have fire drills monthly and fire alarms. How often are there fires in schools? I mean, I just can't get the logic. I find it incredibly flawed and the lack of empathy I hear from people is disturbing because despite my own personal circumstances, I empathize with others. And I think it's sad that it's like, okay, go away. I feel sorry for you, but I really don't care because I care about everyone. Cause I care about everyone.
Thank you, Heidi.
Uh, Michelle Hopper, six, Fairview. Um, we've talked a lot about masks tonight, and I feel fairly confident that, um, the school board is probably gonna put forth exactly what we see up here. So if your children don't want to wear a mask, they're probably not going to. My concern is that we haven't really spoken much about vaccinations. Um, I'm fully vaccinated. My children are not. I don't feel comfortable with it right now. Um, I work in healthcare and I'm just not there yet. And I feel like we're starting to discriminate against the children who aren't vaccinated by way of, you know, you can stay in test if you have a mask on and if you're vaccinated. But if you're not, then you're gonna go home for ten days, even if you have no symptoms. Well, that takes away sports. It takes away school. There's no opportunity for them to do school then for those ten days. And if we're having these kind of cases that we think we're having, how many days can my kid then be out of school before he or she repeats the grade? Or before they're not allowed to play sports? Or, you know, it's, I guess I want to know what are the ramifications then for me sending my child to school unvaccinated? And them maybe not wanting to wear a mask? I mean, probably what's gonna happen is, I don't want my children in a mask because of most of the reasons we've talked about. I have seen a very steady decline in social emotional skills and a very steady incline in the will or the want to leave a bedroom and to get off of the video games. And so I don't want them in a mask, but I'm probably going to put my children in masks because I don't want them to miss out on sports. They can't be out of school for multiple ten-day increments. So I just don't know if there's anything to, to really talk about for that because I don't know that that's even something up for discussion here. But I guess what would be the long-term, you know, problems with, how many times can my kid be out on COVID before they have to repeat a grade? Or how many times can they be out with COVID before they, you know, have long-term issues? Cause ten days in high school, that's a lifetime. You're not getting an A in that class, or you're not, ten days is a lifetime in high school.
Dr. Daly? Dr. Daly, would you like to address?
Sure. So just to, you know, again, I, I appreciate that's a long time to be out. And if it's gonna happen repeatedly, that's gonna be a problem. I, I think that the, the idea behind the test and stay protocol, again, this, this doesn't weigh into vaccination. Um, is, you're, that's what's good about this, and that's why they're putting that forward. So you're able to stay in school and take a test daily to reassure. So if you don't want to do the test, that's where you would have to have the quarantine outside of school.
My understanding was that they had to be vaccinated or masked. So if they don't have a mask on and they're not vaccinated, they can still test and stay?
There's a ton of, there's a ton of information, and I appreciate that. I'm still trying to unpack this myself, so just let me get to that slide.
And again, I think everyone up here, because of all the school districts, we have done the, one of the best jobs in making sure our kids are in school.
This slide shows a little more. So these are, these are four reasons why you would not have to be considered a close contact. So if you're asymptomatic, fully vaccinated, you would not be a close contact, right? So if we were tracing right here, I'd say Michael, but Michael's asymptomatic and fully vaccinated, he's not a close contact. That's why I said, we would need to verify that he's fully vaccinated, right? If you're in the classroom with a mask at least three feet apart, you would not, we would not be, so as we're, we go through a process to determine who are the close contacts. These, now off the top, before we even get into the protocols, these, the, if you meet these four, you're sort of not even included in that group. If you're on the bus and if you've had COVID. So, but that's not to say that then, when you get into the other protocol, if you are determined that you be a close contact, you would, you would have these two options. One would be the test and stay, which I've already applied for and we got approved for these, um, options to before. So you would have the option for the test and stay, which means most likely we'd do something, you come in, get a test in the morning, go to school, go to school. And if you follow that, you can do all sports activities as well as school.
Okay.
Okay? And then if you, is that for asymptomatic close contacts or any close? That's for asymptomatic.
Asymptomatic.
So just, that's for the slide. Sorry, thank you. If you're asymptomatic, yeah. If you're sick, you're sick, you're out. And in terms of just missing school because you're sick, I, I certainly hope that that's not gonna be the norm. It's gonna, you know, we didn't see that last year in the height of all this, and I don't think that'll be, but, you know, we will work with you as far as, you know, a threshold of when someone's gonna be out and what that looks like. Right now, there's no accommodations. If we start seeing masked kids out all the time, then there may be changes from the state level about the role and all that stuff. But right now, this is in place to keep kids in school, and I think these are good measures. And again, they've invested a lot to provide us with that daily testing to keep kids in.
Okay. So our kids can be unvaccinated, unmasked?
Yes, I'm sorry if that wasn't clear.
And again, I don't know if my kids are gonna mask or not. It's up, kind of up to them. I mean, I just don't know.
If your close contact is staying, they do have to.
Yes.
For the period, during that seven-day period.
And I think that that's.
Just extra, extra.
Thank you. We do have to move on soon, but there's a few more people. We've had two hundred people on here, so I don't want to cut people off for thought. The one thing I will point out to the people on, online, there's a few people that have already spoken. We're not gonna go to a second comment from the same people. So we are gonna try to let everybody have one time to speak. Um, Rich Harrington, you're next. I've got people in the room if you'd get one, move over more for next comment. Uh, Rich Harrington, if you'd like to unmute, go ahead. Mr. Harrington. You're doing so well. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna keep you on deck and we're gonna move on to the next person. Oh, yeah.
Okay, hello? Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, Mr. Harrington.
Hi, this is Rich Harrington, Six Humlock Road. So one of the more disconcerting things I sometimes hear in this debate is if restrictions such as masks can stop even one person from getting COVID, then they're worth it. But honestly, that has never, ever been the standard by which we've set public policy. And if you think about it, we've had viruses before, including the flu, many of which were far more dangerous to children than COVID. But has the school committee ever presumed to mandate such restrictions before? And the answer is no. And I think we all know why, not to be blunt, but ultimately, it's not the board's business. It's not the town's or the state's business to tell a parent how their child should negotiate a virus, especially one with a survival rate of over ninety-nine point eight percent. And, uh, moreover, it's not the board's business at all to tell kids who they can eat lunch with either. So you say it's just potentially masks and lunch tracking for now, but my concern is that this is the foot in the door, and come November or December, there will be, um, you know, an uptick in, say, regular flu. There won't be any, um, any grave hospitalizations or death among our children, but it's gonna lead to possibly more restrictions. And we saw what those restrictions did last year. We saw the uptick in anxiety and depression among our kids. And I just can't for the life of me understand why we might saddle our children again with those problems. That's it. Thank you.
Let's go ahead, Rich.
Um, hi, I'm Ariya Kholidaycheck at, um, Six Hill Road, and I'm gonna be a junior, um, this year. I go to North Reading High School. Um, I don't really know, like, a lot of the statistics and stuff about, like, masks and, like, risk versus, like, reward. Um, but I think, like, um, it feels kind of segregated to wear masks and to not, like, be able to really see other people's faces. Um, and I think it's really easy for people, like, to kind of point fingers at, like, the side of the opposing belief. Uh, I think, like, we're all kind of in this and we're all, like, doing the best we can with the information that we have. Um, so I'm kind of for, like, kids being able to choose whether or not they get to wear a mask. Uh, I don't really know.
Thank you, Rich. Thank, thank you very much for coming. Okay. There?
I mean, this is the first time in, I think, history of our country that everyone, anyone's ever said.
Oh, yeah, name, name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Ryan Scott, Two Tower Box Lane. Um, I, I don't know if anyone here has ever heard the theory, like, I wear a mask to protect you. I don't think that's ever been the case in human history. If there are people that are immunocompromised, like the family that spoke earlier, we all failed to. We all, it, it sucks. It's, it's just, there's nothing, but they're, they're gonna have that problem forever, whether they go to a Red Sox team, or they want to go to a Brewers team, or whatever, that's always gonna be there. I think making thousand kids have to revolve, that, that's, that's asking a lot. Um, I think if that person wears a mask, they're safe. They wear the correct mask. Um, and I think all these masks are used because outside of their N ninety-fives. And they, I've, I've had many surgeries in my life. I've never walked into a doctor that had a, you know, Mickey Mouse mask on. They bought a car, it's like eighty years. There's, I wouldn't sell tape if people were wearing those, um, those masks. I've personally been dealing with some metapulmonary mice on this year, and it all started in December. You got a flu shot. And twenty-four hours later, he started getting fever. We didn't know, we still to this day don't know if it was a flu shot. We got the flu shot because we were told we had the flu shot. Been eight months, he's had basically a fever every single day. Between a hundred, hundred and four. Um, playing, he was going to school. Daddy, I hate going to school. I can't breathe. I can't breathe. That makes a difference. Plays hockey, wanted to quit hockey. Couldn't breathe. Cause he had to wear a mask. It wasn't against his face, but couldn't play. He was just, I want to quit. Playing baseball summer, no mask. Doing that grade, it's outside, no mask, everyone. We still don't know if it was the flu shot, like that. So I'm not, I mean, the vaccine, when you talk about vaccines, with, you know, so all blue, you know, I think it is COVID. I think some people, we heard earlier, it's, oh, probably against Democrats. It, it's, it's, it is about freedom. Like, we should want to, whether we want to put a mask on our kid or whether we don't. We've ne, I don't, has anyone ever in their lives ever heard, we have a mask to protect me? Has anyone ever heard that until the last three years? It's never, ever been the case. I grew up with severe allergies. I, when I caught my mona wore a mask. I didn't cover, I didn't cover the lawn in a mask, but that, that mask protected me from the pollen. So, you know, like, I had the mask on. I did not sneeze. I didn't, I could breathe. I have asthma. I still have asthma. I, you know, I, that mask protected me from that pollen. I was fine. It's just hearing all these stories and hearing, and it has gone clear. And a lot of people, oh my god, the public is gonna do this, the government is gonna do this. But there's people on both sides that are wrong. There's people on both sides that are right. It's just hearing, like, your kid has, there's certain, I, I get certain, you know, if you're around certain places. If I'm in CVS and there's a ninety-year-old lady picking up a prescription next to me, I'll put my mask on. If she looks uncomfortable, I'll put it on. I respect that. But if I see a kid, this past Friday, I spent three hours in Children's Hospital with my son. And no problem for a minute putting that mask on. I've been in that hospital probably a dozen times the last year with my son, and I have no issue putting that mask on. I know everyone in there is in there for a reason, and I know they're all at risk. So I, I, you know, I walk in there, I don't even think about putting the mask on. I was in tops before that. Been at two different hospitals, getting tested, everything, every single thing you can imagine. More COVID tests and anyone, everyone in there combined, more blood tests than everyone in there combined. And it's just, I, I, he, this, this mask is, he's suffering, like, he's, you know, he's going to, I don't want to go to school because I can't breathe. He's going to school, a hundred and two feet, I have to read paperwork, half the places I go, because they, you know, they check and everything. I don't know, because I've been told by the best doctors at tops, the best doctors at Children's Hospital, they don't know what's happening. They've never seen anything like this. To this day, we've seen the scariest doctors you can imagine from, whatever, doctors you never want to bring your kids to. And they still don't know. And I'm not, I'm not unconvinced it was the flu, you know, the flu shot, or it was the mask. They, they have no explanation of what's wrong. And it's still going on to eighteen months later. I just, to me, this is, it's a choice. I mean, I, I respect the woman that called earlier and her husband earlier, that, you know, that, I feel for them. I feel that, like, I, I'll, I cry for people like that because I know, but the, but the fact of the matter is, if he gets pneumonia or the flu, he, it's, it's probably gonna be worse than COVID because every s, single kid in our city is more likely to die on the way to school than to die from COVID. And we're not putting hockey helmets on them in their cars on the way home. Which is why we shouldn't put masks on because this is less deadly than being in a car. Statistically speaking, it's three hundred times more likely for a kid to die of car accident than it is to die of COVID. So unless, if we're gonna put masks on the kid, let's do it. But let's also put football helmets on them in the cars, ball will wrap them, cause that's, that's, really, if we're gonna do it, this is go all in and just cover them all up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay. You're done with public comments. Thank you, everybody, for being respectful. I know it's a hard, hard issue at times, and everybody's not in agreement here, but I appreciate people having their thoughts and I worry that every single two weeks we're gonna be doing this, but hopefully not. Um, okay, so we need a motion to accept the, we have, we need a motion to accept the plan for the school year, the dusty, to accept the dusty recommendations for the school year. Can I have a motion? What? Oh, you want the motion?
I make a motion to accept, um, as explained tonight, for the opening of the Fall twenty twenty-one full year, including the Dusty and D C H guidance.
I have a second.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Oh, yeah. I mean, so many people in the community have stayed so long and knowing as a, as a former teacher, how our public speaking is, like, I'm amazed at how you've all come out to share your thoughts, to share your personal stories and give us other viewpoints, I think, what Buckley had asked for earlier and what I had asked for. Your, uh, your views, which, which aren't ones that I've had to experience. Uh, you know, I've got a young family. They're, my kids are three and one. And some of the issues that they've gone through from COVID are nowhere near as serious as some of the issues that many people in this remote team there are on, if you go through. So I really appreciate that. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of quick things, you know?
Yeah.
Like, I mean, hearing, uh, hearing a girl describe her sister as having lost a part of her identity is about as serious a thing as I think I could hear a teenager say on an emotional level. Um, so I want you to know that I, I, I hear that. Um, also, that there are fundamentally differences in terms of which scientific tests say what and how to incorporate those into your daily life. Like, I, I have a master's in life. I guess, I, I don't know. I got, I've got nothing on that.
Your parents are not.
Right, yeah, they're really proud that I'm a law school man. Um, so, but, but there are, you know, a couple of things. I, looking at the P D C and looking at the state, if the state is going to strongly recommend that people that aren't vaccinated wear masks, then I have to interpret that as the state saying masks are effective in some way as something. It's just the only reasonable thing that I can kind of take out of the state's stance on that. So when I look at, at, at these, it seems that the fundamental, uh, difference, what, what, what pushes me in the direction that I stated at the beginning in favor of some form of mandate is having read, again, not, not a fight, is having read that masks are less about protecting me and more about protecting people on the other side of the pack. If it's just about protecting me, then I think is no question that choice is all that matters. Choose for yourself or choose for your kids. When it's about protecting other people, if that is in fact the case, then I think it is an area where the community needs to entertain the idea of some sort of restriction because your choice benefits the person next to you and the state. We have rules for so many things. Um, within that field though, then comes the question of cost and balance. And there have been a lot of arguments that COVID is not that serious for kids, or is not that, doesn't pose as substantial a risk as merits all of these very clear things people have shared about the cost, the mask effectiveness, uh, effectuality. I think that's a, you know, that's a standpoint that it's, uh, I mean, I don't have the staff to do it. I don't, I don't know how to make that choice. Uh, I feel completely in fault if I could do it. But I think that's really what the market to becomes. Then it becomes just get a group of people and see, see how they vote for it, and, and that's gonna kind of fill in that void on, on making the values. Um, I really appreciate everybody coming out and sharing their thoughts. Uh, it's had an impact on how I'm looking at it, the way I think.
Anybody know how to, like, raise your hand to speak?
That's just my thought.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, here are none. We'll do the vote. Uh, Janine? Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
No.
And I'm an I as well. So motion passed with four to one. Thank you, everyone. We have other things on the agenda, but my bladder needs five minutes, so we're gonna take five minutes. If people would like to leave, they're welcome to leave at this point in time. We will be back in five minutes, everyone. Thank you, everyone, again. Okay, so we're gonna go back. I mean, we never officially left, so we're still on the record here. Hopefully, everything doesn't take two hours here. We're gonna go to superintendent's evaluation. Do we have to vote to approve this as well, or not? I think we do have to vote to approve them. Dr. Daly, do we have to vote to approve these?
No, I believe it's a presentation.
No, it's just a presentation of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's formative, one.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the committee members.
So maybe we can set up a chair for, like, a rose-king chair, not today, but it's it. Share our thoughts about them. Sure. We're not waiting on a public comment from you, right?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Oh, cool. I just wanted to make sure you weren't waiting to talk with me. So, Dr. Daly, we thank you for meeting all of your goals, your professional practice goal, student learning goal, and your many objectives and improvement goal. The committee met electronically and, and shared these things, just to read them for the record. For instructional leadership, we rate you as proficient for management operations, proficient for family community engagement, exemplary, and professional culture, proficient.
One question, would you want to share your screen, or do you want to share that with anybody? I mean, I'm saying, if you'd like to.
Yes.
Do you want to share?
I'm hoping, I don't have to reveal how bad I am with technology.
Too late.
If you want to try to share your screen.
Um, I, it's, whatever.
Good thing you have both of them.
Yeah. Okay. The TV, I don't see.
Hey, you won't get it up there.
Okay. Okay, so there you go. So really, what if we just silenced it and everyone reads it? I'm joking. All right. So, just to summarize, Dr. Daly has done a fantastic job of meeting and exceeding his many goals. For the student learning goal, Dr. Daly revised the school, or helps to revise the school improvement plans into more clear plans, though there's still a great deal of work to do on some of those plans. I hope that by next cycle, all plans clearly set forth the goals, the schools are reading to the goals, specifically, which goals we met, and how the plan should be evaluated. Another committee member felt that your performance was exceptional, setting a, a column's gonna come up in a number of comments. Executing goals while navigating and leading a district through the pandemic with no small feat. His communication in particular has been extremely strong throughout this year, and entirely respected in our community because of his leadership and collaborative approach. Again, those are echoed many times by many members of the committee. Dr. Daly's overall performance is excellent. Mr. McGowan is most impressed by his ability to move forward on several important initiatives while dealing with the pandemic. Yeah, we, it's really, it's, it's all very positive, positive stuff. Dr. Daly, this is, this was the year that great superintendents kind of revealed what they had been great and used to try to do in crisis, while still, while still making, it's really, I think we can see it, I'm just kind of going off of it now, but you can see it. We're not trying to recover this year. We're continuing to move forward on our agenda and to do things, trying to do things, despite having gone through the strangest year in American education. Moving into instructional leadership, this is an area where the school committee often doesn't see the process in place. We just see the results and hear about it. There's no doubt in my mind that this is an area of strength. Dr. Daly, it's worth noting that not only did you have to deal with COVID, but the lack of assistance superintendent, and still did an excellent job of student learning. Guys, because it's nine, I'm gonna read, like, a couple of choice ones from each, and if anybody feels like they want to also add their out loud, please jump in. It's nine o'clock. As far as management and operations, this is an area where your communication and data-driven decision has been key access to the community and the university. Your transparency has been a, a great virtue, and the way this comes off, the operations are seamless, and it really shows up, your leadership. And then moving into family community engagement, really, you do an excellent job of making sure the stakeholders are listening to and feel that there is community buy-in. I applaud that, and, and I think that really has and will continue to pay dividends in that community. For professional culture, one aspect that's highlighted is commitment to high standards. When you transitioned into superintendenting, made a few things exciting, both the community as, or just as the committee members and the parents, and, and the bar has been set at a very high level. And I think that is a fair encapsulation of our feedback. We probably should set a goal this year of giving more negatives.
We should, yes.
I had one comment that I could relay later.
But really tremendous job, and with, I can't remember how it was presented.
Okay, other thoughts? Who else want to chime in here?
I, I will, I will jump in and just say, you know, I think you've done an excellent job, Dr. Daly, and I think people forget sometimes you're not even two years a superintendent now. And so, I mean, it's just, it's incredible that, you know, starting off with very little experience as a superintendent, and, and again, I get being in the district for a long time and being an assistant superintendent, but I think you probably realize that being the final say on everything is a completely different change from being the assistant superintendent. And so I think it's just been exceptional, your leadership, and more than anything, I think, holding forums where a lot of tough issues were going on, and you called meetings together rather than hiding, rather than putting something out, and then, you know, you call people together, you hear about an issue in the, in the sixth grade, and you call a meeting on it. You know, you hear an issue going on with social justice, you call a meeting and let people speak. And so I think really that, it was your leadership, really, that I wanted to make sure tonight that we heard people, because I think that has been your way, and I think it's an excellent way to do it, because you get more buy-in when people are heard. So I think that, of all the things that have been said, I think that's the one thing where I've seen with you, even more than past superintendents, you've really done that very well. Thank you.
Can I add that we could have a, a, a meeting on the most divisive issues that schools are facing, you know, right now? And people from both sides talking, and there was universal respect for Dr. Daly. I think that that goes as strong evidence for the work you put into the bill.
Okay.
Make our job easy.
Okay. I guess we're keeping him? I already signed the thing, saying we're keeping him, so.
Yeah. Appreciate the people. No, final thing. I'm going in another direction. Thank you very much.
And I, I will say, we don't get a public comment on Mr. Connolly, but, and the other administrators, but I will just add in a comment here that, you know, I know that you don't do it alone. I know that it's a team effort. Mr. Connolly, you know, Assistant Superintendent Colleen, you know, Cynthia, Dan Downs. You have a great team, and that's one of the things that when we hired you, I know it was your goal to try to keep the team together, and we've been very fortunate to do that as well, so.
I could just echo that. And, you know, every decision that you've spoken to here is not made in a vacuum. I'm, similar to the way John did it with me and with Michael, I do the same with Sean and Michael. I bring Cynthia, Dan, all of our principals in. We, we're a team, and we make decisions together. And, you know, even, even on this, you know, latest issue today, it's like, I, I asked everyone, like, where, where are you today on this? How do you feel? Am I saying too much? You know, Michael and Sean are very good at telling me no, if I need to be told no, and I really appreciate everyone. So it's a great, great place to work, and thank you for the feedback.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on, school committee evaluation. I don't think we did quite as well as you did.
You did okay.
All right, today, it's, since we are, there are people on. If anybody has, if anybody has public comment on anything, you can also raise your hand for these as well, but.
And I will say.
We're gonna meet at 8:00 AM tomorrow.
If you thought we were positive on Dr. Daly, wait till you see our results. We're just trying to keep pace, and we do okay. So, one of the, the, the themes that, for the most part, we found ourselves to be proficient, which is good, otherwise, you'd still like to be doing a terrible job, but there are certainly rooms for improvement, so we're gonna focus on those as we go through this. One issue that has arisen at times this year is with regards to who has the ultimate authority for certain decisions, whether it's the school committee, superintendent, or other boards, such as the board of health. Clearly, this is very relevant today and always. We should educate ourselves a bit more on our specific authorities. And this is kind of a running theme as we move into our goals for next year, finding ways to improve our own understanding of, just legally, how we fit in. And then that, that kind of dovetails into professional development. It, it got put in the back runner at times over the course of the last year. I'm not sure if there's any surprises there, but certainly, there's still ample room for improvement. Many school, many members, nevertheless, attended professional developments that our teachers attended, and many members have participated in community forums, and attended other boards this year. So that's good, but I think those are, those are clearly the, the two spots with the most glaring gains to be made by us, as we continue to evolve. Other than that, certain shout-outs. Stop the teachers' vote, improving our evaluation process, just because I'm on the committee. No, really, I, I mean, overall, apart from that, we felt we were proficient at, at the tasks before us. And the wide-term planning we do with regards to strategic planning and capital expenditures really helped this year. Been able to spend funds that became available. I, I think that really managing the budget and the economics are one of the hardest things we do, and yeah, I don't have anything else to summarize. I can read them all, but they're here.
The only thing that I would add in here, just for the, to point out, not only was COVID challenging, but there are certain years that our job is harder than others, and particularly the negotiation with the, with the NREA. The union contract is one of the main things we do every three years. We did that last year with very little issue. Not only that, last summer, you know, Mr. McGowan and I were part of a group where we met, I think, 10 different times, two hours plus each time, talking about reopening. And that, again, went well. You know, some people did comment tonight on, you know, again, it wasn't perfect, but, you know, I felt like we had the schools open more and longer, and, you know, when a lot of people opened in full remote, we opened in hybrid. When a lot of people weren't open on Wednesdays, we were open on Wednesdays. When a lot of people were going home at lunchtime because they couldn't figure out how to do lunch, we were doing that. And a lot of that came from, you know, working with them. Now, again, Dr. Daly gets a lot of credit for that, but the school committee were part of that. You know, I mean, Dr. Daly and I text just about every day, or at least we did then. You know, we've had multiple meetings with other, you know, stakeholders who worked really well with the select board and, you know, to try to do that, and so, you know, I, I, again, we're evaluating ourselves. I gave a lot of negative comments, but I also think that on top of COVID, negotiating that contract last year, working on reopening, there was a lot going on, and I think that, you know, many members here participated in those, in, in the big forums, and, again, I, I think there's more to be done, but I think we did pretty well overall.
Oh, we have a hand raise. I'm not down there. We had a hand raise? Mrs. Chelly, you want to shout that?
Yeah, it's me. Um, I just wanted to thank you all. That's all. I am, I'm listening here as a parent of three, living in the town. I spoke earlier, got pretty emotional, and had to kind of put the kibosh on it, but I respect you, I have to say. And I, and I appreciate you listening to everyone that has spoken. That's all I want to say to you. Everybody had some, there's so many valid points that were brought up tonight about the mask. I know this is not the, the topic that's being covered right now, but again, I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate you listening, you know, and hearing everybody. I respect you very much. That's all. I appreciate you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
It's nice, it's nice speaking when people are listening, too. Usually, we just have discussions amongst yourselves.
No, you're not alone. You got 36 others, too. We're not going to bed, apparently. You get like 40 people listening here.
Oh, okay. Do we don't have any vote on this one? Any other comments on our evaluation? Next thing, school committee calendar, Dr. Daly. I did not double-check this, but I'm assuming we're not meeting on Friday evenings and Saturdays?
All the, all the adjustments are made from last year. This is what is currently posted. I removed the draft language, updated some of the typos, moved to Monday evenings for everything. And perhaps, there, there may be a few other adjustments in there, just, you know, the principals may have shifted the night their school is hosting, a night, things like that. And so I, you know, I did, I'm just bringing on the agenda again to share it. This will be posted. I'm sure we'll make some adjustments as the year goes on as well. Ms. Brown?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, there was a couple on Wednesdays, but they're just budget workshops.
Yes, yes, that is true.
You were anything changing it from Thursday to Monday, or something, or you go, okay.
No worries.
All right.
I believe, you know, I will also say that I find out what my, my schedule is on Friday, and I don't know exactly.
Better have Monday free.
Well, Monday looks like 15, and came as a possibility, so I'm waiting to find out. I will let you guys know Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and just to kind of, the one other thing I would point out here is our plan is still to continue like we were doing tonight with a hybrid approach. I think we've talked at previous meetings, but nobody was there, so I'll say it again. Where we like people coming. We like, we're not trying to do things in a vacuum. We're trying to be open about this. But we don't necessarily post on Facebook every time and send a, you know, a reminder every single time there's a meeting. We're not afraid of having people come and disagree with us and give us their thoughts, so we like that more people are able to attend by having a Zoom link for us, so our goal is to continue that, while, you know, the way I look at it, now with open, under open meeting law, when the governor's order expires, I think in April, you know, we would be required to have it open for people to come, but that doesn't mean that the chair cannot open it up for live streaming in addition to that. So even though right now we don't have to have it open up to the public, we said we wanted to do that. And I actually just posted it remotely, mainly because we use the form that we did before, and the school kind of is, you know, a little bit chaotic, but, you know, this is the plan, is to do it just like we did tonight, and I think it actually worked pretty well, you know, overall. And we'll, we'll hear from other people, but, yeah. So I think that's the plan going forward for anybody that's listening, to be able to Zoom it or come in person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have an update on NRPS 2025. Dr. Daly, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Just, just very quickly, we wanted to update on a couple of pieces that we've done. We had our leadership retreat after the, the two days, actually, immediately after our last forum. That was where we took the visioning process for the next step. I've shared with you some items here that, you know, are, are three big rocks, again, teaching and learning, student services, equity, diversity, inclusion. And what we've come up with, at least at this draft stage, are some indicators and strategic objectives. The indicators are sort of the shorthand, like E dot one dot one, or SS dot one dot one. And the reason why we did it this way at this stage was just to show, sort of to have a one-pager, quick reference for everyone to see and to align, and this, this is really gonna be a tool that's gonna be helpful as we take our school improvement goals, and even our department goals, or individual educator evaluation, or administrator goals, to have that alignment and that through line. So folks will be able to see how something like, you know, high-quality professional development, special education, English orders, and inclusion, that's a, that's a district goal, and where can I align my individual roles with the school role with the district goal? So this is sort of the shorthand. We have a, a third day of our, our leadership retreat tomorrow. Very excited about that, because this is the first time that we've had a summer retreat with our entire leadership team. It's gonna be about 50 people in this room tomorrow. So it's all of our principals, directors, and assistant principals, who've typically been a part of our leadership retreat in the summer. But now all of our teacher leaders are gonna be here as well, and then our curriculum leaders, special education leaders. I'm gonna bring them through, sort of catch them up to where we are with NRPS 2025, and certainly, we got through, out of all these items here, we got through about four of them in draft. So there's a lot of work to be done to get our actual plan together, and that'll continue through the, the fall. But we're very excited about tomorrow, really focusing especially on this concept of MTSS and support, and, and also just developing their leadership capacity. So we're very excited about, about that, really. Tomorrow is really Mr. Colleen's day. This is a day that I always wanted as assistant superintendent, to work with those leaders, and so he's taking the lead and planning this day. We're gonna talk a lot about how we're using our time, how we're using our professional development, how we're using some of the other resources to move our district forward. So I'm really excited about that, and we're starting to live it, and honestly, I want everyone in that room to realize, what is my role as a leader, is seeing this plan through? And then we're gonna continue that with every teacher in the district. What is my role as a teacher, to see this plan through? So that's, that's the next step. So I just wanted to provide an update on where we are with NRPS 2025.
Questions, thoughts, none of them?
I, I have two quick ones. Number one, I know as part of the negotiation with the teachers, we readjusted some of the curriculum leadership for next year. Have all those positions already been filled, or is that something that, so those, after the contract, that was all already done? after the contract, that was all already done?
It was, and they've been posted and that too will be there tomorrow. So those positions are annual and new people in the roles as of July. You have some people that might retire, step down, you know, but, but everyone put in for those and everyone's, every position's been filled and everyone should be there tomorrow.
Okay. Wanted to make sure it didn't start in September and we had different people coming in.
So one of the, the new pieces we negotiated was this additional orphaned center, which I think is going to pay huge dividends. And we're so excited to have it here.
I was going to ask you how that works. So that was negotiated as part of what we, what you guys worked out in the curriculum leadership stuff?
It was, yeah. So this, this additional day and some of the other additional meetings with Sean are part of that new position. And it's, there, you know, that's part of what we're going to spend time on tomorrow is talking about what, you know, what's going to be the same and what's going to be a little different. And we're trying to, you know, again, empower as much as we can the positions that we have. Continuing to advocate for administrative positions that we may need for curriculum leadership has, has been in our, our vision and our budget for many years, but also to really empower the people that are in these positions.
And, and this may be a stupid question, but I ask a lot of them. NR, NRPS 2025, it begins this year, correct? Is, or does it begin after this year? I mean, is it, is, is, does it cover starting this year and where we get to by 2025, beginning of September?
Yeah. So it's going to be, and the way it's going to be presented, most likely is it's going to be closer to your four-year plan, getting us there. Year one was sort of last year, and then we, as we're closing the gaps, it's what are we going to do in 21, 22, 23, 24, 24, 25, so then we get to a certain point.
Okay. Thank you very much. So comments, thoughts, questions? You know, on the public, we move on to the most exciting part of the meeting. Mrs. Embriano, would you like to leave us, lead us in the minute?
Sure. All right. I'd like to make a motion to accept the July 26, 2021 executive session as written.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion, any things to pop off?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I would like to make a motion to accept the regular maybe open session of July 26, 2021 as written.
Second?
Discussion, any issues of it?
I did not see any.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. What's an update? Connolly, nothing at this time?
So there's nothing at this time. I think it was a detailed report given at the last meeting to close out of fiscal 21. Everything closed that well, and fiscal 22, off to a good start.
Excellent. Staffing, Dr. Daley?
I wanted to share our new staff that has basically been hired since the beginning of the year.
Do you want to share on those final lines too?
Go ahead and share.
Recognize a lot of the names for students.
Yeah. We've had a, we've, we've been able to hire a lot of familiar names and a lot of, a lot of nice growth and movement within the district, which is great. A lot of our paraprofessionals are coming in. We've actually hired a paraprofessional with a doctorate in education department. So when you talk about the qualifications of a paraprofessional, my, 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 yeah, correct.
I'm guessing that's going to be in our.
We have some very highly qualified parents that are coming in, a lot of teacher certifications or they're leading toward this. So I mean, we're, we're really building and growing our own here. It's really impressive. Marianna Connolly, Callan Haggerty, Colonel Peak, and Michelle Rosenthal of the Bachelor School. At the hood, Julian Leach, Carly Ronan, Little School, Jody Elmas, Megan Plante, Phoebe Peter, Kelly Quinn, Molly Sullivan, Middle School, Wendy Byrne, Crystal Kelly, Douglas DeWorri. Douglas was a long-term sub with us for a few years. He's going to be in the school adjustment counselor six, 12 now. Catherine Curran, Alexander Manna, Cameron McLeod, Lauren Sike, Ian Rush, High School, Kelsey Coughlin, who was also in a long-term sub role, as was Catherine Curran. Lindsay Gervino, who was here a few years ago in a long-term sub, we brought her back as the school adjustment counselor at the high school. Karen Seng, who served multiple roles in our district, helped us out in many different ways, and she is now the new administrative assistant at the high school. The district level, Alexandria Oleska is going to be a pre-K to five school adjustment counselor. Katie Lombardi, again, a Florida nurse, she was with us last year. We were able to bring that position back. Again, the issue with COVID funding, we're very excited to have her here. Also, Naderah is our coordinator, secondary special education. The food service, Sabrina Cobiello, Diane Clocchello. So some great, a lot of new hires this year. It's actually the lowest number of teachers we've had in a while, but still quite a bit of hiring over the summer, and, and that's been great. And we've been doing a lot of new processes under Mr. Connolly's supervision and direction with Tasha Wilder and Anne Liddell, and, you know, we're really reexamining all of our HR processes in a lot of different ways. So it's done well with that. One piece I wanted to add here, the staffing update as well, is for September 13th, I'm going to, I may have mentioned this before, but I'm inviting our professional status teachers to our meeting. I'm not sure if I mentioned that before, but that's something that I, I've seen, my brother's district did that, and I thought it would be nice. When a teacher earns professional status, we're really making a, a career-long commitment to our staff, right? So for three years, teachers are on a one-year appointment, and after that third year, we're making a commitment to them, and I think that's a nice thing. So we're going to invite them to come here, just introduce them, talk a little bit about it, and have a chance for you to see them. Very often you see them here when they're hired or on paper, but I think it's nice to name to a face. And, you know, we're celebrating a little bit this, this commitment of professional status. I think it was a nice, nice thing that I stole from, from another district in New York.
Shouldn't we get to see them the year before they become professors?
Yeah.
Just in case?
Yeah, yeah.
Two quick questions. Number one, when, when is the orientation for the stu, for the school? And would you like this, would you like the school committee to come if we're around, or is it not quite as soon as we did this year?
Sure. No, that's, that's on September 2nd.
September 2nd?
September 2nd. One wants to go to that. Unfortunately, it's always on a vacation.
And when is that?
It'll be in the, right now, it's going to be in the morning of September 2nd, and everything is planned to be in person this year. First day, September 1st. So, so orientation, the 30th, 31st, September 1st is our professional development for teachers. September 2nd is our welcome back day. It would be in the morning at the moment. That's exactly how it's planned, not finalized yet, going to come out soon. The Friday is the Labor Day day, and then Monday is Labor Day, and then Tuesday is also a no day for teachers and students. And then Wednesday, the first day for kids.
September 2nd. And then, just on the staff, maybe silly, but it seems like every year, special education teachers, we have to keep hiring over and over and over again. Again, I don't work in the schools, I'm just curious, why is it that we don't, are they just, are they hired for one year, or is it that we constantly have turnovers to that main position? And then I know there's multiple, you know, special education teachers in different, you know, categories, but we're just curious why it is that that is a, a position that turned over so much?
I, I would say it's not uncommon to have a lot of needs in, in special education. It's a difficult job, difficult to find people that are licensed and qualified. I also think we have a lot of needs that change from year to year, so sometimes it's not turnovers much as new positions or different positions. I think you've also, you know, we have seen just a fair amount of turnover in those positions, and they're also challenging still. We're finding, you know, the number of people that are applying for jobs is, is challenging as well. So it's also, again, it's, it's a very difficult position. I think when we, when we examine and evaluate our teachers, we want to make sure that they're held to the very highest standard, and I think that's across the board. So, yeah, I, I think it's just a, a challenging position.
I, I have a question. School adjustment counselor. I understand roughly what the role is, but the name is so disconnected from that.
At a very high level, without taking a lot of time either.
Yeah. What do they do?
Sure. I think, I think you're going to, we will probably be doing some kind of a presentation on this for you as well. We're actually, one of the presentations for tomorrow is this. So we're going to have to see some shifts in positions. So Michael Rosa has been the coordinator of school counseling for several years. He's still had a full caseload at the high school, for next year, he's going to have a reduced caseload at the high school, and he'll still have, I believe, some seniors that he'll see sort of graduate. He doesn't, you know, that's great to see them into college and careers. But he'll have more of a district role. So part of his visioning and, and presentation, so he's again under Cynthia in the student service, it's, it's a change of concept honestly about how we're using counseling. And it's about more universal. So when we talk about MTSS or a tiered system of support, the concept of catching, identifying any counseling needs upstream as opposed to being reactive down the road and trying to say, well, this student is depressed, this student is having anxiety, this student is having school avoidance, let's, let's come in with some intervention. The idea here is let's, let's try to work with all kids and social, emotional needs and supports early on. And that's why we've got a K5, it's going to be across three schools and a six, 12, to work on more universal lessons in classrooms, supports for families, supports for students. We still have some adjustment counselors and some, obviously guidance counselors and school psychologists in each building to work on those needs, but these positions are going to work at some more larger levels. They're also going to be there then when there are challenging cases, difficult cases, to assist our programs such as the bridge program. They're going to be very key assets for working in those programs as well, but really helping kids adjust to all the different aspects of being in the school and working with what we call sort of wraparound services, other, making connections, school students and family to other agencies and, and partners in the town as well. So there's just so much with mental health and, and support for kids that we need. We see it all the time, and, you know, again, these are, these are ways to do that. Even as a part of our RSR funds, one of the things that was mandated by the state was the 10% rate, right? Of the, of the grant had to be used for, uh, per, 10,000, 10,000, yeah. Had to be used for the purpose of health. So there was a, a clear indication from the state level as well, how important these type of positions were. So we can certainly have a presentation from, from Mr. Rosa, from Ms. Connor, to, to update exactly how those positions are working out. We're very, very excited. These, these positions that have been in our budget have been talked about for many years, and so to do this model of a K5 and a six, 12 is a great, is a great step in the right direction.
And, and just to kind of piggyback on that, one thing that would be nice is any sort of data that we can get that, that shows the benefits of this, I think would be useful because, you know, in tough funding years, I want to make sure this isn't a position that goes the way we fought so hard to get some of these positions. I think it's really important to track it and make sure we see, you know, how it impacts it, because, you know, when we're trying to make decisions in the future, it'd be really good to have that data.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Vachelli, I see your hand is up again.
I apologize. But I just was curious. Well, no, I, I, I'm hanging in here. I have a, I have several good friends that are teachers across the country, and one of them is a special ed teacher in New Mexico, and she had a caseload of seven, seven different grade levels on a day-to-day basis. I'm wondering what you're going to do, like, are you limiting the workload for the teachers incoming to North Reading, or what's your perspective on this, and what's your take on it? Where are you going with it? Is it going to be a limit? It's kind of impossible to handle that many students as a one person, you know? So, um, yeah, again, that's my question, I guess, is what's the mutation if our children do need somebody? What's your, what's, what's your stance?
Dr. Daley?
Was this more about special education?
I, I think this is more about the, uh, Ms. Vachelli, I assume this is more about the, the adjustment counselors?
The caseload, yeah. For, the caseload for a special education teacher is what, what is, are you going to limit them? Are they like, hey, you can handle X amount and this amount? Or are you going to, are there, how many are there? Like, what's the plan in place is what I'm wondering, I guess, personally, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think you're combining two things, but I'll let Dr. Daley drop.
I am, I apologize, I am, I totally am.
Yeah, I, I think we very closely monitor the caseloads. I, I have not heard that they're exhaustive of our teachers, and I, and if this is going back to the, the question we had, Mr. Buckley, about turnover, I, I have not heard that. We are, we are working on a better process, part of our HR reorganization of exiting, to see if there's any indication that there was an issue. But we, we've never heard that the caseloads are in any way that, I, I think if you look at our numbers, our caseloads are very favorable compared to many other districts. So I think we have certain parameters in place to ensure that our teachers are able to do, you know, the job that involves report writing and attending meetings and managing a caseload, providing support to students. And again, I think part of our, you know, group that's coming together tomorrow, we have special education leaders in each building that help advocate for the needs of those buildings, and I think we have good channels of communication to keep those caseloads healthy. And if they're not, I think we hear about it as well.
And, and the only thing I would add here, on, on special education, you know, we're meeting what's required by the, that often, you know, like if somebody's required to have a one-on-one, we have to meet that. And for the adjustment counselors and some of the other mental health issues, mental health positions, I know that in the past, I've been on the finance planning team, and we presented about caseloads were way too high, you know, where there was, I remember seeing a suggestion of, you know, 600 students, and we had 1,500 students, you know, for one, for one person. And so, you know, we've done much better to get to what the professional standards are, are suggesting, because there has been, over a number of years, there have been some additions to try to get those caseloads down. So we have looked at those numbers in the past. I know when we were, you know, working with the select board to try to figure out funding.
Yes. The caseloads for this council, it's really about ratios, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, I'm not in this position as a parent in the town, but I am curious, just given my history with friends and family members that are in, are in, are in this, or, you know, they're in education, and it's a lot. So, yeah, I'm curious. I was curious, and that's why I'm kind of hanging on. I apologize. And I'm going to be the thorn in your side tonight. Thank you for answering.
We're almost there. We're almost there. I was the one who, I was on the school committee, I came and I was, Janine can attest, I was the thorn on their side, so.
No, no, I don't want to be that person. I just was.
You have to run the local committee, but now.
Oh, my friend's out in New Mexico telling me, she goes, like, you know, I'm, I'm handling eight, nine different, you know, and, and I have several teachers that I know. They say I'm, I'm going nine, nine different grade levels, and I'm one person, how can I possibly handle it? So I just want to make sure that there isn't enough people to handle whatever is needed in our town. That's all. So, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, subcommittee update. The only update is FSBC did meet, and so.
No, I mean, I mean.
Oh, bids and donations. Sorry, bids and donations first, you're right.
We do have one.
For Mr. McGowan.
I moved at the school committee vote with separate for attitude, an in-kind donation of computer services and an acoustic guitar valued at $350 from Scott and Michelle Taylor to benefit the district.
Uh, second? And discussing on this? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Now, subcommittee update.
Of the FSBC?
FSBC is, I think, the only thing that we have.
Yeah, um, we met Friday night. Forget what night it was.
Uh, Tuesday night.
Tuesday. Um, yeah, there was a forum this time. We had previously met. Um, it was mostly about, um, we have roughly three hundred and sixty thousand left over in the building thing and, um, uh, issue of lights down the field had come up. And, um, was a discussion had and at the end of the night, we decided to not exceed a hundred and fifty to get the lights on the same field and the.
The practice, the gra, the grass, multi-practice practice field. Remaining of that field is going to be lit up.
In the past, not in the next, but.
In thirty seconds, Michael, how do you feel? Ready to go? So we're, we're moving ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah. No wasting time. The bid, the bid is being advertised next week and it's going out. So we're going to try to potentially start a line and the bid come in and they're within budget. They're about eight to ten weeks on the polls. We could be able to, we might be able to get this done by late fall.
Perfect, right? Okay. And, you know, I'll just, yeah, I'll just add, I mean, it's not about risk. I mean, the money has been set aside. There is ongoing litigation. There's a chance that the district could lose and we have to find the money, but at the same time, I think that there's a need to have light on the field in order to, we just see more and more groups and, you know, students that want to use those fields. And so, you know, if, if there are funds available right now that could be used in order to accelerate it so that we can have light on those fields, I think the, the majority thought that it was worthwhile to do.
Their plans are to bring the other aspects of the project through the processes in towns such as the CIC, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, then it's administrative report, Dr. Daly.
I think, I think my, my point was to share about the PBS teachers. I'm sorry. Um, and that, I, I wanted to share that.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any correspondence?
I think we, um, received some emails to all of us about the, the issues that were discussed previously.
Correct. And I think many of the people that sent the email also that shared tonight their thoughts.
Yeah.
Okay, future business. We have a meeting on August thirtieth, uh, at six thirty PM. Uh, school reopening and the budget calendar. Um, I think the goal will again be hybrid like we were tonight. Um.
I will be away but available till two.
We, we will have to, we should take a, a poll and make, make sure that we'll have a quorum in person. Because I think, we actually don't have to do it. We don't actually have to meet the quorum requirements right now because of the governor's order. All five of us could be remote still. Um, but if we can have a quorum in public or in, in person, it would be good. After the governor's order is over, then the chair, whoever's running the meeting would have to be in person and the quorum would have to be in person. But I don't know that it'll be around, but I'll come back for it. So, um, and then Monday, September thirteenth, we also have another, uh, meeting. And again, I think school opening will be in, um, every agenda.
So you don't think you'll be in a session?
I'll be, I'll, I'll, I thought I may not be here. I may be in New York. So I came back for this one, obviously.
May I ask, I'm sorry, whoever is speaking right now, what is your name?
My name?
Yeah, yeah. I've been, I've just been hearing you all night, but I, I didn't catch your name in the beginning. I apologize.
I'm Scott Buckley.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, are there any other issues we need? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
You guys, happy holidays. It's been a long one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.